This is a test of the City of Palaca audio system. This is a test of the City of Palaca audio system.
This is a test of the City of Palaca audio system.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Palaca, Special Call City Commission Meeting. It is September 30th, 2024, and it's just slightly after 6:00 p.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. Ms. Kryans, could you please read the meeting notice?
Yes, ma'am. To Commissioners Tammy McCaskill, Justin Campbell, Senior, Will Jones, and Rufus Borum. You're notified that a special call meeting of the Palaca City Commission is hereby called to be held on September 30th, 2024, at 6 o'clock at City Hall to One North Second Street, Palac, Florida. The purpose of the meeting is to hold the final public hearing on the final miller's rate and final budget of fiscal year 2024-25, and also to cover some of the agenda items from the canceled September 26, 2024 meeting.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the invocation by Pastor Mulberry, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Borum. Please stand.
Pray. Father, again, thank you for how good you've been all day. You brought us together once again for this time of setting. We pray, God, you're blessing upon this people. We ask, God, that you guide us, lead us, direct us, give us instructions, give us what to do, give us how to do what when we run into situations, God, that need our attention. We pray, thou, God, that thou would bless even continuing the work here, that we, God, would move this city in the right direction for your glory. And whatever you do, we praise you and thank you for it. It is in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Was it on here?
That's okay. It's all good. Roll call, please, Ms. Kryans.
Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill, Commissioner Justin Campbell, Commissioner Will Jones, Commissioner Rufus Borum,
President.
Mayor Robbie Croy.
President.
All members present and accounted for. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to City Manager Administrative Reports, updated Riverfront Park Phase Two Revitalization Projects. Ms. Carty?
Evening, Commissioners, Mayor. All in attendance, we'd like to give an update on the Riverfront Park we face to revitalization. We've had meetings, we've had community meetings, we've also had a presentation made to the chamber, and that was required in order to submit the application. So we are moving forward with the splash pad application. We anticipate receiving hopefully $200,000 for that particular application.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Carty?
Yes, the, what, can you repeat the cost again associated with that?
Okay, so the grant application. Well, one of the things that we've done, we have a grant application that we're pursuing, where we intend to receive about $200,000 for those, for that particular grant app for the splash pad. In the budget itself, we have already placed $375,000 in the budget for the splash pad. So we've been getting different. We did look at a variety of costs. It can range from, it depends on the complexity of the splash pad, also the square footage, and so it can range from $100,000 to $800,000. So it just depends on what you order. We also had to identify possible locations at the riverfront. And additionally, the $200,000 would include other improvements in Riverfront Park. So it's just at the stage of submitting that app, because that's all we were trying to do is make sure that you're aware.
Right. What you said there was almost 375,000 committed for that particular project, and you're looking for, you're looking for, you filed for a grant application for $200,000?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, we be very mindful about the initial cost and where we are now, and then looking at some of the other things that we could potentially do. I'm not against it, but again, we need to be able to keep costs in mind and what it's going to look like. I mean, we're voting on something that is just a concept, but we don't know what the, what it's going to actually look like. And we've had these, these things happen before with empathy and other things.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill?
So you said the grant, the grant is for $200,000?
Correct.
And it has language in it that speaks to other improvements, so it's not solely for the splash pad? Or is it for improvements to place the splash pad?
So it's primarily for the splash pad of the $200,000, $158,000 is for the splash pad. And then there were other items in there. We did send this earlier, I think, last time, but we just wanted to give an update because it's also a part of the application phase.
Yes, ma'am. So $42,000 is basically slotted for other things, but the 158 is going to solely towards the splash pad.
Exactly.
So which of playground updates, um, repears, the bathroom facilities, um, or those other things that the Riverfront Park?
Are included in that grant.
Yes. Okay.
Are we, are we, the agency applying for the grant, or are we forming that out? Because I saw a cost of $30,000 just for the application.
Right, so.
Or forming that out for someone else getting paid $30,000 just for that application?
The, um. Oh, may I come back to that? Because what, what I kept my mind on was that full amount of $200,000. And I do believe you're correct that $30,000 is going to the agency that's supplying for that grant money.
That's administrative costs, and that's not uncommon with grants. That's pretty usual.
My point was, uh, an in-house grant administrator, I could say it was $30,000. So, so when we talk about costs, those are other things that you could think about to defer the cost.
Yes.
And keep that cost at times.
Right. And I think in this case, this particular agency, they, they really brought it to us. That's why it was so last minute-ish, and the deadline was the, I think it was actually today that we had to get it submitted. So we, we did meet our deadline, we did submit it, and what we're doing is making sure that it's appearing in our agenda updates for you. But we've, we've.
And my only other bigger concern with the splash pad, a big concern is the maintenance costs afterward that we need to keep that in mind.
And then we talk about the complexity of it. We, us, you know, looking at the designs and having some put before us and see what a $100,000 splash pad will look like versus a $800,000.
Exactly.
You know, just different concepts, please. And then again, we do know the more complex it is, the more upkeep there is and costs associated with it.
Right. And we did do some of the research. We had to make a presentation to the chamber, and part of that presentation, or to a nonprofit organization, part of that was to discuss the maintenance costs, the upkeep, also any risk involved and the necessity for the disinfection and all. There were a lot of items.
And will that be brought before us so we'll know and everything?
Yes, of course. And we did bring it before, we did bring it before. Yeah, but we will continually bring it to you.
Okay.
As it progress.
So that'll take it down. Just for, just for the record, I'm just saying $128,000 because that $30,000 goes to administrative costs.
$158,000 is for the splash pad.
Because it was $185,000.
But then the $30,000 comes out of that.
So why don't I do this? I don't have it.
I'm just trying to get it.
$200,000.
It's $200,000.
Right, there it is. Right.
You said it was $100,000. $42,000 goes to other things, right, that gave, left us with the 158,000?
There it is up there.
Okay.
Thank you, Sunny.
$158,000.
On Ms. Kryans.
And that includes the $30,000 and the $158,000. I got you.
Just making sure.
One, one at a time, please. Go ahead.
As Ms. Carty was mentioning, Chamber, the Chamber, and I think that another civic organization and a private investor also have expressed wanting to partner with us to make that happen is the City Park. So just like they did at Rotary Park, by the county complex, they did the same thing. So that is not just the city. The city have a part in it as well as other stakeholders. So it won't be just a city of Palaca project. So they asked to partner with us. So as far as I know, am I right on that?
Yes, you are. Correct. And we, we, we're going to be pursuing that as we move into this process further.
Yes, and that's, that, that's, that's really good, and we do have partners, but we are the sole responsible party for that going into the city. So if they do decide to drop out, we own it.
Exactly.
And did you also check with the county as well as some of the other ones that had those?
That's a part of the due diligence that we will be performing shortly. What we had to do was make certain that we met the deadline to be eligible. Additionally, this money, even when it comes, is going to be towards the end of this fiscal year or the beginning of next year. We're just not sure.
That will appreciate. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Our next agenda item is an update on the St. John's Avenue construction resurfacing project led by the county.
The only reason why I brought this here is because we're having some conversation with the county. There was, it's, okay, I would like Mr. Joe, could you come up, please?
The Barakio, please?
Yes, please, Mr. Barakio. Can I explain more about that $68,000 for the paving?
Yes, good evening, everybody. How are you? Yeah, part of the problem is they had rain that washed out all the sidewalks, and they're trying to push the blame or mitigate the blame elsewhere. So that's kind of where we're at with them.
Right.
They want to say it's us, but it really wasn't.
But have we resolved just the point that the work is still going to get done so we can deal with that afterwards?
It's done now. They finished it today.
About this particular project.
Yes.
Thank you.
They did do it.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we did attend meetings, we did have, well, conversations would be a better word. At the end of the day, the county did commit to making sure the work was done, and later we will need to figure this out better. Okay, just wanted to bring you, I wanted to bring you an update on that.
Thank you. Any questions on that? On to update St. John's River Environmental Center Port Consolidated Properties land swap.
So my desire is to have Ms. West speak a little bit more about it, okay, if you would?
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. The land swap closing transaction occurred last Wednesday. So the transaction is now complete. The River Center is now in the possession of the Blue Crab Development Group, and the port consolidated property adjacent to us is now in the possession of the city. And so now we can embark on whatever plans. If later on you want to provide some direction in terms of workshopping, public meetings, that would be extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Additionally, the funds are received as well.
So the entire closing transaction has transpired, so all funds have been paid, and the deeds have been executed by all the parties and properly recorded in the public records.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
How, what's the funds we receive?
He wants to know what the money.
What were the funds? You don't have to be to the penny.
It is true. $275,000, Commissioner Borum.
So. Those, and they haven't been received, the funds. Also, the moving, that process is?
Yes, the Blue Crab Development Group has been flexible, working with the city. As you know, community affairs had stuff over there, tables, chairs, exhibits, equipment, and they have been flexible in accommodating community affairs to go into the facility to obtain whatever possessions the, the city needs to retrieve out of the building. The port consolidated property was sold as is, and I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to tour that, but you're certainly able to do so at this time.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
I'm just not sure what use. I just not.
Well, that's what we've got a workshop, and that's a few discussions.
How much money is going to cost us?
Commissioner McCaskill? I'm sorry. I didn't know you were in town. I'm so sorry.
I mean, you know, the menu of $200,000, $275,000 is, is really dropping the bucket. When they sign that contract, they could go straight to the bank and borrow money off of that asset. And, but I don't think we can go and borrow money off of that building. So that's what I'm at.
Commissioner McCaskill?
I know it. I did tour. I did tour, and I know they had a conceptual drawing of some things that they wanted to do to bring it up to par. Was that a part of the deal still, or is that off the table?
So that, that rendering that reflected the larger warehouse space being converted?
Thank you.
Being converted into commission chambers to accommodate a larger crowd here. That was done at the request of the city, and also it was done by Blue Crab Development Group. It wasn't done on our dime. None of, we did not pay for any of those renderings. So that was simply a concept. We can take it or leave it. It is not part of it. But it was simply provided by Blue Crab to, I guess, get the creative juices flowing in terms of what that property could be used for by the city.
You say it was a request of the city to do that?
If I'm recalling correctly, Commissioner Borum, you had asked the previous city manager to please come up with some ideas and renderings on what that property could be used for. That, that was not done in lieu of that Blue Crab Development Group provided the renderings that you saw with the facade, continuing the architectural facade of City Hall and the interchanges to the warehouse space to accommodate commission chambers. That was done by Blue Crab, not us.
I hear what you're saying. I did not give direction. I wasn't even interested in the building. So I just want to make sure that it's on the record.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner McCaskill.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
Okay. No, I was just going to say, that's why when we hopefully schedule a workshop, we can look at what could we possibly do.
We go out and get something. We don't even know what we're going to do with it.
Some of the ideas that were being discussed were parking garage and things of that nature.
You want to show me?
Um, if we're done, I just want to verbally say thank you for giving me an opportunity to work with all of the department heads. I want to really congratulate all of the department heads for a great job, the collaboration, the fact that they actually believed that we could harden this building, which we have done, and to add some of the improvements that the commissioners have expressed a need for. So congratulations, Public Works did a lot. Everyone has a whole work together. Thank you.
I, I think we would be remiss to not acknowledge the fact that Ms. Carty has really stepped up to the plate at the end of budget workshop, stepping into this position and providing the much-needed security hardening infrastructure of this facility in an extremely short amount of time. I have found it nothing short of inspirational, and I really personally appreciate the security measures. I have found it nothing short of inspirational, and I really personally appreciate the security measures.
I would like to say, um, thank you as well, because that's one of the main things that I've been harping on, was the security of City Hall for years, and trying to make sure that it was written into our budget so that we can take in consideration the safety of those who work here. So thank you for taking out the time to make it happen in the timeframe in which you did, because again, safety is our priority for all employees, not just on the outside, but on the inside as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ashwell.
And I, I appreciate your expedience with moving forward with making, making these safety improvements. Again, it has been on other city managers who've been in place, but you really brought it home, so I certainly appreciate that.
I appreciate my team, my team, Team Palaca.
And I can't, Team Palaca. And I can say thank you as well, I had a tour that she had, was delighted to give, and the entire time she was giving the tour, she was giving her team accolades, so thank you so much for that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
There's more still in the works.
Oh, definitely, by, by Thursday, there will be more improvements, particularly geared towards your safety individually. By Friday, there will be even more improvements geared towards your personal safety. My team believe that if we cannot safeguard you, how can we safeguard ourselves?
In addition, I think, in addition, I think it's important to know to the citizens that we now have a space that we're able to meet with our constituents. I've been elected since two thousand and fifteen, and I haven't had an adequate place to meet with constituents. So that gives us the ability to meet with you all in a place that was created in such a short time, so thank you.
Yes, and not to keep harping on it, but also just not, it's not all about us, just us and you all. We are having conversations, I've had conversations with our chief of police to make sure that we're gonna be providing trainings so that all are safe in case of, you know, an active shooting takes place or anything happens that we know what to do as a whole in here. So we got a lot of things moving in that aspect, so thank you so much for that.
Yes, again, I want to thank you again for the, the space you were providing for the Commission, just like Commissioner Campbell stated earlier. Been here, I've been on the Commission for ten years, and we had to meet in private spaces anywhere we could. And so that, that goes a long ways, in addition to your leadership with meeting with staff after you were assigned the role and helping to improve morale among other things. And so thanks for bringing the team together, rallying everybody together to keep the city moving forward.
Thank you, it's fun.
And I'm, I'm not gonna reiterate everything everyone has said, but thank you for everything you've done in the two weeks that you have been in this position, it is refreshing, your positivity is refreshing, and just everything you've accomplished. So we truly appreciate your efforts.
Likewise, I appreciate the, you know, the opportunity.
You can't.
Just by saying ditto, I won't go into.
Ditto. Okay, all right, so we're done, we just, I just wanted to let them know.
Good, so now we're gonna move on to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes and no actual taken, be taken on these items. These are public comments for items not included already on the agenda, please be respectful in your public comments. We'll start with Elizabeth Van Rensburg.
Good evening, Elizabeth Van Rensburg, three ten North Third Street here in Palaca, Florida. And good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. I would like to also applaud the work that Marcia has done in the last two weeks. I've seen a lot of changes here at City Hall. The most exciting one to me is the fact that I am now seeing our city team come back together and move forward in a very, very positive manner. The reason that I'm here tonight is that because frankly, our last city commission meeting terrified me a little bit. We, we saw the exit of a city manager, another city manager in a long, unfortunately, line of city managers. We saw a bit of upheaval, we saw in, in my mind, some, some confusion on where to go from here. But one of the things that, that came out of it very demonstratively was that perhaps we should ask our former mayor of Palaca, the Honorable Terrell Hill, if, if he would like to come back and indeed be our interim city manager. That did not happen, but the idea of it also apparently did not go away. And I would simply like to say to you tonight, in, in all respect, that you ask for public input from your citizens all the time. I truly believe that the public input that you received in the last election, when Mayor Hill was indeed not reelected as the mayor of Palaca, indeed, our new mayor, Robbie Correa, was elected, gives you the idea of how the majority of the citizens feel going forward. Asking Mr. Hill to come back and represent the city as our city manager, I, I feel like the proper channels need to be gone through, I feel like interviews need to be done. I feel like there's a chain of command to follow, and, and I certainly in the last two weeks have just seen some wonderful things happening at City Hall, and I, I hope that you will continue to let that happen as we build and regrow as a city. Looking forward to hopefully some smooth sailing, some calm seas, and some happy things on the horizon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Jane Rosa. Also, you don't need to give your full address, just your city of residence or town.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Mary Jane Rosa, and I'm a resident of Palatka. I also serve on the Historic Commission as an alternate. I'm new to Palatka, I've only been here for about two years. But I would also like to speak to the fact that when we have an election, it counts for something. And in saying that, I don't think that it is appropriate, because I did read the report on the previous problems that were created here in the city with a caustic work environment within City Hall by the previous mayor. And having come from corporate America, I know how important it is to work as a team with your coworkers. So I'm happy to see improvement, I would be unhappy to see us going back to something that we did in the past, thank you.
Vicki Duke?
Vicki Duke, Palatka, Florida. I just have two small things, I know earlier in one of the meetings, I brought up the fact that I was concerned about the amount of tar in the roadwork process that had been is ruining the brick intersections downtown, and I know we said we would put it on the punch list, but I just wanted to bring it back to the foreword now that we need to definitely, I know we had a, I know we've had an issue with sidewalks and the other issues, and that was much more important than the tar, that needs to be removed once it's done. But I just want to make sure that's still on the punch list, that they're responsible for cleaning up the mess that they left. And then the other thing is, the, kinda in the same area with the St. John's Avenue issue, I know that we were explained about the gas line that had to be moved and all that, and that's why there's been such a delay. And we discussed getting signs for St. John's Auto Repair, that there'd be some kind of signs to help route them to their place. I haven't seen any of those. I see this open for business sign, but how does that get us there?
Go ahead, Commissioner McCaslin, although we're not usually answering people after.
I will.
Yeah, this is not a question, we'll answer it after the.
But that was all, that, you know, when I saw that it was still torn up, and there's still not a way to get there, and, and I haven't seen any real obvious signs, and I think as it delayed another month and another month, something else needs to be put out there until those businesses can go back to working full staff.
Thank you, Sam Deputy?
Sam Deputy, Palatka, Florida. I want to say thank you for whoever in the past several weeks has renovated and redone Oak Hill Cemetery. I, I visit there on a weekly basis, and this past week, I have never seen it look that good. And so I don't know what person is in charge of that, but thank you, because it was a pleasant experience not to think about the weeds and the trash and all that blowing, it was wonderful. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. And I also wanted to echo comments that were made prior to my being here, and, and that was, we heard about the staff meeting that happened the day after the last city commission meeting. And it went through the city, it went through downtown immediately about how good it was, and how the staff had pulled together to make sure everything was covered. So I want to thank Mrs. Cardy, and then when I walked in tonight, wow, it looked professional. City Hall, and, and how exciting that was. So I am looking forward to with excitement for your interim period, and I hope it lasts a long time, because I'm seeing things and I'm hearing those on the street, and that's what I like even better. But to that, there is a small group of us downtown that would like to have your permission. We would like to do a lunch for our city employees sometime in November, just to say thank you for what you've gone through, for your service to this community, and for your loyalty to our, our city and our City Hall. So if we could get your approval for that, we'll work with Mrs. Cardy and come up with some dates, that would be a good possibility, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
How you doing? I'm speaking directly to the City Commission.
Excuse me, can you please give us your name and your city residence?
Tavara Clark, I ain't gonna get where I'm staying, 'cause I got some threats last time, I'm saying. Commissioner Kim, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner McCaslin. On ten twelve twenty-three, each one of y'all apologized for the City Committee error. It was a scrimmage there, what she say? For your record, I'm gonna hand each one of y'all the document showing what she asked for the sale document.
She mean who was Clark?
Ms. West, or somebody from, from the office, somebody from the city. Y'all saying it's a scrimmage there, y'all see where you asked for the sale document. I done lost everything, done went to jail for y'all committing fraud. Y'all telling me I got to get a lawyer for y'all committing fraud, where y'all got all evidence showing that y'all committed fraud, I did not do nothing wrong. So my rights is being violated all, and Mayor, you violate the sunshine law when you trespass me from the City Hall. I can't be trespassed from the City Hall without no legal, no legal grounds, so that's a violation of the sunshine law. So I, I want, I can't get on the city agenda every time I get on the city, try to get on the city agenda. I'm either forced, either talking about, I'm trespassed every time I want to get on the city agenda. This where the trespassing is coming from. Y'all violate my rights, y'all committed fraud, you uphold the city for committing fraud. It's right here. I spoke with Mr. Traver to obtain the business sale document that stated he would provide them to date. So I want to know how it's a scrimmage there. I want to really, uh, um, just like y'all say, y'all keep, y'all tired of me, keep coming down here, keep coming down here. I'm gonna keep coming down here to my freedom. I'm the one offered to go to prison for something the city did. All the documents show I ain't done netting, I ain't signed no paperwork. Y'all expunged the BTR that I ain't even signed over a netting without my knowledge, without my consent. You keep coming, I was trying to get on the city agenda, I can't get on the city agenda, y'all keep blocking me from getting on the city agenda. You telling me I gotta get an attorney, for an attorney to prove that the city did wrong. You got three city commissions, you got you, Mayor, you even apologize for the city doing wrong. Even the city attorney said the city did wrong, so I'm gonna be a criminal, or you gonna, you gonna uphold your rights as you got sworn in, uphold the Constitution to treat everybody equal. I don't think it's fair, but just like I say, I want you to resign. Cause you ain't, it, it ain't right, it ain't right, I'm, I'm finna, this for y'all record. I'm gonna hand it to each one of the City Commissioners.
Can you please finish up, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting the paper ready so I can have it thrown now.
Ms. Givens?
Just to let you know, there are four copies, I'm keeping one back for the record and providing you guys with the other three.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Staff. I have a couple of questions, my name is Tarsha Givens, I live here in Palatka. From what I understand, there have been two investigations. I would like to know the status of those investigations. I would also like to know what are the findings so far? And I would also like to know what do you plan to do about the findings that you have found thus far? I would also like to know, will you continue to look for more findings? In addition to that, I would like to ask this question. Would you like to invite the federal government or the FBI to help with the investigation? To dig deeper? I also like to add, what we sow, we also worry. Was done in the dark, will come to light. I'm curious to know what are your plans concerning justice and persecution? In closing, I know I missed our last meeting, and I was disappointed that Mr. Bell was fired, but it makes me want to ask the question. If Mr. Bell broke protocol, policy and procedure, it was terminated, what happened with your assistant city manager, was he terminated? Do we have any form of discrimination going on here? Are there some things that we should be concerned about as citizens here? Are we treated fairly and just? I ask that question because I, like Mr. Clark, I haven't been able to get on the agenda as well. And I've been coming since last year, March of twenty twenty-three. So he's not the only one, and I'm not sure if there are any other citizens, but as far as I know, I have not been able to be added to the city's agenda, and I have requested that in the past, thank you.
Anybody else have the public comment on general non-agenda items? Seeing no closed public comment, on to Commissioner and Staff response, Ms. McCaslin.
Campbell was first, thank you, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, you go first, I'm sorry.
Just to pose a few questions as a result of what I'm hearing that draws a concern, and I would like to know the official protocol or steps it takes in order to become an agenda item, and why have, I've heard Ms. Givens say it a time before, as well as Mr. Clark said a time before, that they have went through the process, but not have been able to. So I'm a little concerned about the process as to why they have not had the opportunity to be placed on the agenda for whatever reason that they deemed necessary.
Yes, Commissioner, the agenda request form is simply a request that the City Commission placed the matter on the agenda, is, it is not. That the city commission placed the matter on the agenda is, it is not a matter of right. It is fully within the discretion of the city manager and the mayor during the pre-agendas. To place that matter on the agenda or not. And the city manager, in the case of Mr. Clark and Ms. Givens, opted not to have those matters placed on the agenda.
I have a concern. There's five of us that sit up here, not one. And um, with all due respect to the mayor. I believe that again, one of the items that was requested to have a presentation or whatever. Had some kind of direct correlation to some things that Mr. Clark requested. So I'm again, a little bit interested in knowing why one of five gets to make the determination. As to what comes before the entire commission. That we may have some say in it. We, I'm not sure what Ms. Givens was going to bring forth. Or any other citizen that may have gone through the process and not have gotten on the agenda. I think that's not fair. I think that's not professional. Um, and again, I think everything that comes with regards to um, a pu- for, as a request. Should come before the commission some way, shape, form, or fashion, even if it's just for us to vote in its entirety. To say, we want to hear this matter before the commission, not just have it to where a sole individual that represents, we are a. Elected body, not a one-sided body. And again, in order for us to be fair and concise to all of our citizens. I think that's something that we need to take into consideration to revamp and revisit. So that again, we don't have citizens who's coming in here and making it appear and not saying that they are making it appear. But it appears as if we're not concerned about their um, concerns that they would like for the commission to have. And that's very dis- that's very disturbing to me and I I I don't like the sound of that.
So just very briefly, it is the city manager's decision in his discretion to place it on the agenda. And nothing precludes any citizen from coming to make public comment for a period of three minutes. But we will certainly, uh, I've I've now received direction to look at that policy. And perhaps provide some steps in terms of what should be considered in having a matter placed on the agenda.
Well, I think the the city, whoever sits in the capacity of city manager, they report to us. So again, I think it's important for us to be able to determine what we want to have come before us. Versus what the city manager at that time would like to have come before us. Because again, if we have several um constituents, citizens who have put in requests and their voices are not heard, what are we really sitting here for?
So may I, may I say something?
Commissioner McCaslin, she was, she actually was.
Mr. Um, Commissioner Campbell did ask, addressed a few questions that I had, but I have a few questions. Uh, just for clarification, you said it was the city manager and the mayor? Did you initially say that?
Yes, because the mayor sits in on the pre-agenda.
And this determines, okay. If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong. I think Ms. Givens provided a copy of the agenda that she, um, agenda application, so there wasn't anything hidden. If I'm correct, did you say that there were things that she didn't want to be um, exposed? Because I think she gave us or brought in a copy of it one time. Am I correct?
I I don't know anything about that. It's a one-page request to be placed on the agenda.
If I'm not mistaken, I think she did. Hmm, okay, um. One more thing. So I got that correct. You said it was the city manager and the mayor that made that decision. And Ms. Givens did bring in the agenda that she put on there. So my question would be, the agenda application that she brought in, what negated? The fight the beginning on the agenda? Am I able, able to ask that because that is public record now, right?
Let me try to get in a little tiny bit, if I may.
Were you involved in it?
No, not at all. But um, I I I think I wanted to, I wanted to gain some understanding and clarity as well. In that I believe that they present their agenda request. Uh, doesn't it, city clerk, does it go towards you first and then comes in our pre-agenda meeting or hours that done? So they can have a better understanding of the process.
Yeah, of course. Um, Sunny, great city clerk. Um, I do present all agenda requests to to the manager and I copy usually the mayor. In it, and I can speak to the cases specifically if desired, but just kinda give her a general synopsis. Um, I make sure that I'm not the only person that's aware of agenda requests. Because it's not my decision to place them on the agenda or not. I I would tell you that a lot of times, things that we see requested to be placed on the agenda can be handled by staff. And historically, that's why not every request that comes through is brought to the commission because it can be handled by staff. Usually the manager has other ways of bringing requests to the commission. And not every citizen that makes a request for something they desire to be done, asks to be on the agenda. Some si- some, and I'm not speaking to their cases specifically, I'm just generalizing. Some citizens may, may want a pothole be fixed. And they, they come to the city manager and say, hey, I want my pothole fixed. Some citizens who aren't aware of the process to going about a pothole needing to be fixed. May jump to say, I need the commission to come out and fix my pothole. Um, so just, just giving you that as an example, a lot of times we find that things can be done in-house. By sitting down with the person and resolving their issue. And the city manager, of course, via email or otherwise, has the ability to tell the commission of of things that they've resolved. And were able to handle in-house prior to to coming to this level.
I don't think that address not anything.
Commissioner McCaslin, go ahead. You for snakes. Okay, I, yeah, I didn't mean to let you put it up again. I thought you weren't finished.
If you wanna speak on it.
Okay. Thank you. That was a very good uh, synopsis, Sunny, of the process. I hope it's not out of order. And since we know that Mr. Clark, as well as Mrs. Givens, is far beyond a pothole being fixed. And they've brought this before several times, will it be out of order if we ask that their items be placed on the agenda? Would that be out of order to ask? Because we know they've come before us several times. She has an application with the issues that she wanna address. Can you give me guidance in that? I just don't wanna overstep my boundaries of getting, getting involved in that. But can that be a request since they brought it to us several times?
Yes, that is, um, I I do need to be clear that within the past year, both of these individuals have. Been granted their agenda requests and made presentations to the city commission. Um, I don't think on this particular topic for Ms. Givens, but certainly for Mr. Clark. His presentation was on this very substantive matter. And there have been numerous meetings internally with the city manager and other department heads. With certainly Mr. Clark. I do know that the previous city manager met with Ms. Givens to try and address her concerns. But certainly if it's the will of the commission to have these matters placed on the next agenda for a presentation, by all means, we can do that.
And I'm only asking if the, if it has not been resolved. But if I'm hearing correctly, if it's safe to say, the two citizens are informing us that it hasn't been resolved. And they would like to be on the agenda. That's only the case I'm asking if that's.
And not only that, I would also like to be given the opportunity to meet with each. Of of the citizens that have brought their situation here.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will definitely meet with them and there will, if they still have the request that they want to be placed on the agenda. They will definitely be placed on the agenda.
Okay, so my question again to you is that, um, and I like the fact that you asked that. But then again, they're asking to come before the commission here now. And we're able to talk, but then we're, and it's good that you would like to talk with them. But it appears that they would like their, their information to be brought before us.
I, yes, I would like.
Seems like it's a deterrent to me and I could be wrong.
No, I would like them to come and place their item on the agenda as well. I appreciate that.
Okay, Commissioner Borm?
Um, I I do know that, um, I've spoken with Ms. Givens, um, prior to about her. Item and looking at the um, request. She put it in several times and again, I don't wanna continue to reiterate, but uh, and it was more than just a a pothole. To be um, discussed, so. I was a little bit concerned that why it didn't get put on the agenda. And so we have exhausted a number of times speaking with Mr. Clark on. His um, issue and it appears to be the same thing. So that's a whole different thing as it relates. But if there's a piece of information that he's requesting. Um, we need to make sure that those requests are met. And the information is provided if the city has it. On the other piece, um, throughout the state of Florida and probably across the US. Uh, generally, the city manager and department heads create the agenda. The commission, mayor is not involved in that process. So I have been asking for the last five or six years to change that. Because one individual is. Have more information and knowledge around what, how things are, are are materializing. As it relates to, have more intimate knowledge around what's happening. So i- in any other city, it's not, it doesn't happen like that. So I think that's something that we need to really look at and think about, that we get the information at the same time. And I had also add, ask that, even if that's the case, if you keep it like it is. Then have, let, send us some links and let us be able to at least listen in. On the pre-agenda meeting so that we're apprised a- a- and know what's going on at the time. Things are being put on the agenda. That, I mean, that's, I had asked for that request a number of times and um. It was tossed around, but it never happened. And so I think that's a big part of the problem that we have here. And and it's a simple, it's a simple fix. It's just not the way things are done around the rest of the state and then across the US.
Any additional comments?
I would like to see this be um, an agenda item um, at our next meeting. So that we would be able to give the proper direction as to what we would like to see as a commission um, with regards to this. I don't think staff needs to bring us a recommendation. We need to recommend what we want to see the staff. Um, as well as the policy of citizens, um, or anyone who um, wants to bring something before the commission. I want to have that discussion at length as well, so that we would be able to better improve um, that. Because again, these are things that should not be happening. And again, I think there's an opportunity for us to um, move forth in a more effective manner. And allow our citizens to have their voices heard one way or another before the commission if they so desire.
I, I'm in support of that, Commissioner Campbell.
Commissioner Borm?
And just, you know, just a la- a last point, you know, uh, in terms of who can put things on the agenda, you know. Any one of the commissioners, mayor can put things on the agenda as well as uh, community who bring things in. As well as um, the uh, what the city manager also put on the agenda. So those are, these are the avenues in ways that. The typical operation of adding things to the agenda, that's how those things normally work.
Yeah, um, I would like to say that it was obvious that. The two individuals that came for us today had already exhausted the means of meeting with staff. And they were bringing it to be placed on the agenda. The question was asked, but never answered fully, is why were they denied and who denied them? Okay, so that's the first thing and that's the first answer that we need to get. Secondly, when we start talking about the mayor being able to sit in on the pre-agenda, is that policy or is that practice? It's just, pardon me?
That's practice, that was our day.
Practice. So let's, let's, let's stop that practice right away. Um, because that is an unfair advantage that we don't have, like Commissioner Borm said. And and that's what we do, we legislate up here. So we either change that now or continue with the confusion. So I think that we need to move at this point to change that. Thirdly. There was a question asked, and this is question that Q and A, should be a response. To what Mr. Mr. Clark said, what Ms. Given, she asked a question, a pointed question. She asked you, asked staff about two events. So is she do that? Does the public do the, the, the answer to that?
Question.
Yes, and I I do wanna point out, Commissioner, both of the items are on the agenda later for discussion.
Right, and and it will be fully discussed at that time.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner McCaslin?
Ms. Stu- Mrs. Duke, um, with her verbiage on the signage, one of the things um, about the sign, signage. I know we had a, the uh, business owner for Saint John, from Saint John's Autobody Shop to come in the last time. Uh, with the concern about her business, um, losing business because of no signage. I do know that um, she, I, she informed me that the mayor responded immediate, immediately and put some signs out. But the verbiage was along the lines of supporting business as the roads are under construction. May not be exactly what it, what um.
Yeah, we already exist and we already have them in our possession in the city.
Okay, yes. Well, um, I asked her, what is it? Um, she did an assessment of a business. I asked her, what is it that she would like to see or local businesses would like to see on the signage? And she said simply, something saying open for business. So um, with that being said, I'll do, I'll let, if you don't mind, Mayor defer it to. The interim city manager to let us know the follow-up on that, how it went.
So basically, uh, this weekend, we discussed it and this morning, uh, staff was directed to. Make the sign and get it up and we had it up by Mr. Peter. I'm not sure what time he got it up. But it was completed and delivered to the business owner, I would say by three or four o'clock today.
And what was the response?
And and she was extremely happy, all of the, they were very, very happy. They thanked us over and over again. So the sign basically said, open for business, and that's what they asked for.
And she said that she think that that would simply help folks knowing that still that although, you know, there are signs. Um, saying that there's construction, thanks for supporting, but letting folks know that we are open for business. But with that being said, I do know that Mrs. Duke needed, um, said something about other verbiage that may need to go. And I think we need, you know, to know exactly so we can try to help make sure that we appease as many folks as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you planning on doing it for every business downtown?
Well, I think that right there, um, she made several. And um.
Total of ten.
A total of ten, but if they can make possibly be in the vicinity or something or however, I think that was cheap to say. A cheap way to go or a simple route to go and just say, hey, open for business. I don't know, we can talk as a team, uh, uh, as a commission or as a board to determine how we can implement that.
I think there may be a way that we can take that same concept, but also do it more in the, what's the?
Sandwich sign.
The sandwich sign that would allow us to say, open for business and then have Velcro. That would allow the businesses to say that are open. Because you may have somebody that say a business is open and they may not be open during that timeframe or during that day. But I think for that Velcro would provide an opportunity for us to have that bigger sign and then have the businesses that are open. Up under there, it's attacking the same thing, but just providing a little bit more um, personalization with.
I like that.
We will take the recommendation for it. Uh, also, um, you, I I'll, I'll be quiet quick, but just to say. Uh, the Public Works Department, uh, committed to cleaning the cemetery, so we congratulate Public Works again.
Mayor, I do have one more thing with regards to what Mr. Deputy brought up, um, about the luncheon. I have been contacted by, um, Ms. Beverly Spales with Grace Catering. She also would like to do something in support of our city employees as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Say B?
The A.
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, if I remember correctly, I believe you had a speaker card on one of the consent agenda items. I think it was for G, if I remember off the top of my head.
Um, yes. But we, I I was just waiting to see if we pulled and we could, I could ask, good. Anything else?
I would like.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, consent, consent agenda excluding items A and G for discussion.
Second.
Your motion is second. Um, I do have a public, um, speaker card rather for. Your motion is second. Um, I do have a public um, speaker card rather for four G Boo on the Avenue, Ms. Duke.
I'll pull that one.
Yes, she he pulled it. A, he pulled A and G, Mayor.
Oh, I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry. Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Um, for A.
So A is the Florida Gas Transmission Company is seeking to install and operate an interstate natural gas line that is they're looking to have the staging area uh, encumber airport property. And so they are seeking an easement. They have conducted uh, an appraisal to assess the value of what that easement portion for the property would be. And the valuation came in uh, at I believe fifty-six thousand. Um, and instead, um, Florida Gas Transmission has offered seventy-five thousand above fair market value um, for that easement. I believe we have a representative here from Florida Gas Transmission. If you would like to please come to the podium. This is Ms. Beth Porter. Uh, we have been meeting um, with her and her team several times and she can answer any additional questions you may have.
And before, before she starts, also Airport is sitting there.
Oh.
Airport managers.
You, oh.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, excuse me. Beth Porter, Florida Gas, whatever question.
Have any questions specific to that?
So this is, is this temporary?
No, some of it is. We have a total of um, just under one acre of permanent easement, zero point eight two, eight two four acres of, excuse me, zero point eight six acres of permanent easement and a total of two point one eight five acres of temporary easement.
So, so what confused me here is uh, the subject land, as I was looking through the packet, it says thirty-nine point seven acres that that is on here and it also shows that acreage on here. So.
That is the subject property. So that's what the, that is the portion of, and of course, the, the airport is much larger than, that property is much larger than that. That is the acreage that the appraiser, our independent appraiser, used for, for his comparables.
So with that valuation, you know, it's very misleading because I'm thinking that the city need more money than seventy-five thousand for that piece of property.
Yes.
Uh, and looking at city's best interest. And you have, you have here for the asking cash price would be thirty-nine point seven acres at fifty thousand dollars per acre. You're looking at one point nine million.
Yes, sir.
So, and when you say seventy, seventy-five thousand, I just stood that up. So I want to ask Mr. McNamara to come here because he's our subject matter expert in that area to, to let us know. Is that, this a do or don't?
Good evening, Commissioners. So the question, could you repeat it?
Question is, is based on the cities, your professional opinion is accepting that seventy-five thousand dollars for that piece of land and these shoes sufficient?
So, um, two points. One, uh, the easement allows them to service their line, which is, which is important for us because you're not necessarily giving up the property. Uh, two, part of this process, since the sensitivity of the airport airfield uh, come into play here. Um, this has a couple of different layers that we're comfortable with um, relying on. And that is, you know, at the end of the day, the FAA is going to look at this because they have to submit a, a comprehensive documentation of report laying out what the project is all about. So this is just one step towards trying to accommodate the gas lines being um, run over city airport property. Uh, but I, in terms of the appraisal, you know, I, I've seen different versions, um, seventy-five thousand for an easement, you know, it's it's not bad. Um, we just want to make sure it come to that for operations.
Okay, I understand that. So you mentioned about the layer. So again, leaning on your expertise, are we doing this in order?
Um, you know, so I, I've, I've seen it in a couple of different directions. So I think from a time sensitive standpoint, um, getting the approval here is fine because I'm not sure if they've submitted uh, the report to the FAA, um, but that still has to be done. So, you know, so that's going to take a little bit longer than most periods. So but our part, having done our due diligence here, looking at, okay, are we getting fair market value? Because that, that's key for us. Um, and we, we, we are, are there, I believe. Um, and operationally, uh, as I stated to the gas company, you know, our sensitivity is you cannot interfere with flight ops coming in off of Moody Road, so.
Okay, that's the concern I had and wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And just to let you know, we have submitted the, the sub- submittal to the FAA. So that is in, under review right now.
Thank you.
And also, uh, Ms. Beth will make sure that she keeps Mr. Yule in the loop. She will continually copy him and we will stay aware.
That's the most.
Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Saying no public comment? Thank you. On to.
Yeah, the vote, Mayor.
I don't know what. I'm not too much. Um, all in favor?
Uh. Not been a motion, Madam Mayor.
So moved.
Second.
I thought we had a motion.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
No.
No, there hasn't.
That was the one we discussed. A, we discussed it first.
I haven't even introduced the item, Ms.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner McCaskill, second by Commissioner. I didn't miss that. Campbell, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. On to G, could you please read the resolution?
Thank you. Resolution of the City of Placca, Florida granting a special events permit to Sam Deputy for Boo on the Avenue, sending forth the provisions of the permit, granting permission for road closures and providing for scribblers' heirs.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
We have to listen for what it was.
I was gonna call. Who, who pulled it? Okay, come on, Mr. Mr. Cutright.
Yes, citizen submitted a public comment card.
Go ahead.
Alrighty, Mr. Cutright, commending the fair direct.
Should we listen to the comment first? Because that's the only reason it was pulled.
Ms. Duke, would you like to come up? Please give your name and town of city of residence.
Vicki Duke, Placca. Um, my main concern, and it sounds like we may, they may be covering that in this now, is that when I've attended this in the past, there was, traffic was still allowed to travel on Saint John's Avenue while Booing the Avenue was going on. And the sidewalks get so crowded and it's children, of course, they're very excited and there's cars parked along the road there. And when they see Billy across the street, they say, oh, Billy, and then they run out in the street. And because the sidewalk's so crowded with children, if you have more than one, it's hard to control them. And so when I have attended it, um, I was concerned as to why they didn't block off the traffic for those two hours uh, where no cars could travel on those few blocks on Saint John's Avenue to make for sure that children darting around didn't get in the street. Um, because it is well attended, it's daytime, it isn't a lot, you know, it's daytime. But um, if you have more than one child with you, it's just hard to make sure that one of them doesn't dash out in the street. And that was my main concern. It's a wonderful event and it's well attended and I, I, I don't want it to go away, but I'd like it to be safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cutright?
And I think it's probably what saved us some time. If there's an opportunity for me to make that request, because last year I physically saw um, a child almost um, being hit. And of course, we don't want that to be on us. We close it down for parades, but I think this is an opportunity for us to be able to maximize the space if we are allowed. So if I may, I would like to see a request made. Well, I would like to make the request that we take into consideration closing Saint John's for the blocks that it is utilized for so that we can maximize the safety of all constituents.
Uh, Commissioners, Ms. Carter, uh, one of the stipulations, stipulations for this year was road closures from second to eleventh street. Uh, Saint John's Avenue from second to eleventh street. Uh, so we did take that into consideration and we also put that provision in place going forward to make sure we have the safety of the kids in there.
Perfect.
Any additional questions? Um, Mr. Deputy? Are you coming up for public comment?
Go ahead.
The, the, the issue is you require us to have police and therefore you require us to pay the police. Uh, this is an event that costs each merchant participating three hundred and fifty to four hundred as I spend for candy alone. Uh, and if we had to pay for police and closing the streets, then we would just have to not have the event. Uh, because it just, you know, our merchants, that, I, I don't need to go into all that, but there's extra fees involved in all of that, that the city charges, and we would have to come up with that. And that is an issue because we follow that with the Christmas parade, which once again, you know, is five to six thousand dollars and it's a lot for a few of us to be raising to do things for the city that we don't charge for. And we don't want to charge for the Christmas parade. That's our tradition. We don't want to charge children to go trick or treating. Um, you know, we, we don't want to get into that, but your ordinance calls for that.
Thank you. Mr. Cutright?
I don't know what else to say, but uh, yes, in this, in this Boo on Avenue, we will have road closure. Uh, that has been addressed and that has been concerns. Uh, Mr. Sam Deputy and my staff and also our special event team has been discussing, trying to make things easier and cost efficient, cost efficient for everybody, but also stay in line with our policies and procedures.
I mean, we do have, we, we are, we're the one that set policy here and we know that safety is a priority. So if we can entertain conversations, I don't know about being cost efficient and working with folks when we are doing these type activities to make sure that we're considering the safety of, of our, our citizens. So that's something that we can, if the commission would like to entertain, looking at that policy and modifying it to, to reflect um, uh, dealing with those costs associated with closing the streets during those events.
We, um, because this is kind of short notice to the people putting on Boo on the Avenue, we do have some special event funds and I'm willing to give some funds.
And I'm willing to donate towards it as well.
So we can cover the cost of the police, of the street closing rather, um, if we can do that. Do we have a total cost for that?
I can give it back to you. I don't have it in front of me, but I could definitely get that to you tomorrow.
Is there anybody else besides Commissioner Campbell and myself all willing to?
Uh, I think mine may be exhausted already, but if not, I'm definitely willing to do so. I think.
I believe this would be next year's fiscal year's funds.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'm willing to.
There are three of us willing to contribute. Once we get that total cost to divided by three and let us know so we can move forward and not have this not happen for the children.
Does this have to be a motion or not?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Except G as a.
Hey.
Right, so we, we haven't gotten that far yet, but.
No, but we're talking about another motion, but we have to make a motion for this one.
For, for, for the, for the, for the funding, if, if it's in your special events fund, we've already talked about that. Uh, a number of times, we don't have to continue to bring it before. We can just say what line item it is and uh, who, what agency can provide those.
So in, in making the motion, if you could just clarify, that um, the funds are to be coming from special events funds to pay for the street closure.
Okay, so who wants to make a motion for approval for G, adding that?
I'll make the motion that we approve item G, also giving permission for commissioners to utilize event funding to help offset some of the costs.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. On to regular business. It does say in the agenda recess for ten minutes. Does anybody want to take a recess? We want to keep going. Okay. Um, presentation direction incorporating a policy regarding the acceptable use of.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, okay. Recession for ten minutes, please come back. Okay, okay, I, okay. Recession for ten minutes, please come back. And we're at um presentation direction incorporating a policy regarding the acceptable use of city-owned IT appointment into the city's email and internet policy.
Yes, um I'm going to ask Ms. Jones.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, um before you is our, is also included is uh. Our appendix nineteen, which is um our policy that we currently have for uh internet and email um usage. Which is very vague. Um so what we did is um we inspired. Um was kind enough to give us some more guidelines so we could um kind of incorporate more. Use of passwords and different things for our employees so that we can try to safeguard ourselves. Against all of the spam attacks and all of that. So what you have before you is a, um just a. A package, the highlighted yellow pieces, I'm assuming in your packet is what we currently have in policy. And then all of the additions is things that we need in there that were not um in our policy. So it covers the computer access control, clear desk and screen guidelines, company password standards. Off-site work, mobile storage devices, software usage, antivirus protection, um tele. Telephony, equipment use, contract and employment termination and monitoring and filter, filtering. So we have policies in here now that would cover all of these areas. So we won't have those simple one, two, three passwords. We will have strong passwords that would make it harder for it to be br- um broken through, but we didn't have guidelines in our policy. To um accommodate that. So that's what this is. It's our same appendix nineteen with the new information and. Um specific guidelines as to how we can have our employees put in passwords. Um not share their passwords and this type, all of that stuff. So this is for your review, um to see if it's anything that's missing. Or you would like to add in there before we bring it back to the commission, um so we can incorporate it in our appendix nineteen.
Uh I mean, I, I haven't really read that, the policy I would need to look at it a little bit further, but I, I think um. Hopefully they are, they're um implementing what's uh industry standard, industry standard should um. Make sure that they are using uh strong passwords. Uh I don't know if they're using uh two factor authentication. Anything along those lines.
Not at the moment. Um I'm, we're not right now. So, and we don't know what, when they give us the generic password, when they set up an email account, we change it to what we want to. Um this will actually have our employees have to put strong passwords. So if I just decided I want mine to say Kit Kat at this point when I change it. There's nothing to stop that or to have this kind of stuff in there. So the guidelines really, and I did do um a research of some, a lot of the stuff that. They submitted to us as for SHRM guidelines um for IT usage and it correlates with it. So it's nothing off the charts of something that we should not be utilizing anyway.
But, but ge- generally, you know, passwords are s- so easy to be able to acquire. A number of different ways and then also how the information traversed through either wireless or wire network. So. And I'll just take a look at it to see if I see anything that's different. If I do, I, I'll, I'll share that information offline.
Can I also ask about the two pipe factor authentication? Is that something that would be so difficult to add or?
Well, it's going to be additional costs associated with that and, and basically what it is is that. Even if you knew somebody's password, you still would have to have the code.
Code to get in, yes sir.
Some other fact, it could be biometrics, it could be another fact, I mean, you, you got, you know, biometric where you can use a thumbprint, your retina, all these different things. So they, they can't have that because it's with you, you, it's a part of you. So uh we can look at some of those things and I'll share.
Okay.
If I see things that could potentially assist.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
I was like, did some incident prompt this? Uh was there? I, I had read this, was someone using inappropriate language or was it just the password that prompted?
No, it's not just the passwords. It was just trying to tighten on our security first of all. Um what we did um. And we, the first measure was to make sure all personal items are on not utilizing the city. If you, I think you um guys know that we have had a city, the city of Palika password hasn't been changed for a while. So that was something that we first wanted to address. So no personal items. Only city is on the city's website, on the city's password. Everybody else, your personal devices has to go through the city guests. So that was the first thing. So because it's kind of hard for any IT to be trying to track something when you got a personal phone. Into our network, behind our network, in the city of Palika network, if that makes sense.
So that's why it's policy, you shouldn't stop that and that stopped a lot of that, right? No use of city phone on our network.
We did and we, and we said, it's done. Yeah, so we've done, yeah, we've done that. So, yes, sir.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, just, I mean, and, and if they did use a city phone, maybe. There's ways that you could um allow for public, you know, for a public wifi or.
Yeah, we do have a city guest that you can connect the, um your personal phones to. I mean, the city of Palika. That's behind our network. That's our network, the city of Palika, not the city of Palika guest network.
Yeah, you, you just don't want them to ride on your, on your main network and anything that could potentially.
Yes, sir.
I'll take a look at it and just see if I see anything.
Okay, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Um next on the agenda, discussion direction, shrimping and fishing on city docks.
Yes, I, I would like to bring up uh Assistant Chief. Mike.
Matt.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, Mayor. Um so tonight we're here to address um the docks. Um there's been some confusion over recent weeks concerning the docks. Where can people fish from? Where can they shrimp from? Um and under the prior, some of this confusion came under Mr. Bell's. Um time as our city manager, he was receiving some complaints. He reached out to Chief Shaw and I. And we started having officers go down and enforce where uh people could fish or shrimp from. Um and it was a little on the confusing side as far as the ordinance. The ordinance identifies different things um with docks and. Um some nautical termination is what I'll call it within our ordinance. So uh Ms. West looked at the ordinance, she looked at the contract with legacy. Um and we've come up with what we believe to be the best solution um for the shrimping and fishing. And do you guys have this?
Yes.
Okay. Um so if you look at the front page, um.
May the clerk be provided that?
Excuse me?
May the clerk be provided that? Or can someone send it to me so I can put it on the screen?
Um I don't have it electronic. Um so if you look at this, this front page here. It shows our main dock and our main dock based on the ordinance and um the contract. We feel very confident as staff that the fishing and shrimping can occur on our main dock. But no fishing or shrimping should occur on the slips that are right here. Um or on the little small docks that are for the boat ramp. And then if you flip it over, um you'll see where um. We did have two docks, but now we have one for right now. That's a whole nother topic. But we have uh one dock uh left for right now, um that is in green that we can shrimp from or fish. Uh as well as the pavilion, we can have shrimping and fishing done there. Uh the other thing that we're looking at doing is having proper signage put up um at the front of the dock. We're walking up from land, kind of like what a pier would have, as well as have signage put up. Uh from the waterway side of the docks so that folks on boats can come up and they can see. What are the rules? Where can they, where do they go to get slips? Where, for the four hour slips or six hour slips? I'm sorry, Ms. West can. Correct me on that. I'm not sure if it's four, six hour long slips. Um and where do they go to do that? Uh what are the rules? Because there are some rules that we're going to need uh implemented on the. Uh signage that basically uh we have had some damage to our docks uh on and off over the years where fires have been started on them. For during the shrimping times and stuff. So no fires, no alcohol. Um and then where do people get uh boaters get their, their slip passes and stuff? Does anyone have any questions?
So I have a question with regards to the signage that's there. Is it in a place that it needs to be relocated so that it is not confusing? Or?
Some of that um signage has been removed. Um and right now we're working on um getting a good rendering for the, the pier style dock, I'm sorry, pier style. Um signage that gives uh our residents as well as our visitors.
Not have something like this printed on the proper, um I guess.
Like a kiosk.
Like a kiosk that would visually.
Right.
Um be a little bit more easier and friendly, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, sir. That's something that staff can discuss with y'alls um.
All right.
Any other questions?
And, and to, we'll see on some of the special areas, like say for instance. You're coming off of the main dock down by um Air Lawson Brown Marina uh building there. So if you're going off and then you can just have uh no shrimping, you know, just a sign. In the red area, in the red zones, that we, you know, no shrimping, maybe in a couple of areas so that people know. Just not just one little spot, but just kind of spread out.
Yes.
Up and down the areas.
Yes, sir. We can take care of that.
So the biggest takeaway is. That is shrimping and fishing allowed on the dock.
Yes, sir.
So that's what.
What? It's just, there was confusion about where and.
And also put something down there for clean, you know, help, helping, helping to clean up.
Yes, sir, to clean up.
Be a good neighbor.
Well, and that's what, as, as far as our staff was concerned, that's what we were telling everyone, but at first we didn't have signage. So it looked like the officers were just going down there and bothering people. And when we would say, no, you're okay to shrimp here, but not on the, the, the slips or whatever. People would just look at us and be like, well, why not? It's, it's a dock. So that's more, that's what caused us to have to visit all of this and. Some of it was a little bit confusing, so we met with legal and this is what we've been able to come up with.
Great, excellent job.
Also, we see concerns about people in boats that they couldn't get in because everybody was tripping. So we have to be able to accommodate everybody. As much as we can.
And, and that's my own question. So um are, are they, uh is uh the um legacy group down there? Uh operating um on a daily or frequently? So that's also kind of would be a, a help in that area in regards to. Um sure, because if they're, if they have to charge for those slips and people are moving into those slips and. Different things that make them, they losing money and so.
Yes, excellent point, Commissioner Borum. We actually are working with the legacies to make sure that. Um contact information and also their website is going to be provided on the sign. So people, apparently there's a, a portal on the website where they can go online to rent the boat slip online. Um so that contact information will also be provided on the sign that we're currently designing.
Maybe with a QR code or something of that nature. I don't know, they're, they're right here. They can answer our question, Mr. Legacies or.
They're, they're working with us.
Okay.
They really are.
Yeah. Does anybody have any specific questions of them? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Right, we're good.
Just making sure I sent you here. Any, any additional questions?
Just want to thank staff for the excellent job that they've been doing with all of these things that's um making the city a better place. A real working place.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion direction investigation of former employees.
Okay, um I'll, I'll take that.
Okay.
Um so I can give, um, all right, we do have Mr. Don't say anything, Greg. Rossman is here. Uh he's going to speak if needed. Um the, the major point is that the prior city manager was in the midst of conducting the investigation. He did state that he intended to have a complete. He did state that he intended to have it completed within two weeks after that time that the meeting was being held. Uh, so we attempted, I did communicate as interim city manager with Mr. Rossman, letting him know, like there's, um, we would like to complete the investigation as much as possible. Um, he did, I asked him to try to put together a report that would give highlights and if there are other issues that he thought he needed to look at to indicate that. And just give us a summary. Additionally, we had never been billed by, uh, the attorney slash investigation. So I was concerned about that. And so he did follow through with that. Before I, I asked him to speak, however, uh, I did have Ms. West do some work as well.
Sure. So, uh, briefly, I, I just want to reiterate, and this has been stated before, but I am going to reiterate it. If there is a perceived conflict of interest, the appropriate procedural, um, course in the state of Florida is for a local government employee or elected official is to file a complaint with the Commission on Ethics. I've stated this before. And the Commission on Ethics, this is, this is what they do. Um, they determine whether the allegations are legally sufficient. It's a three step process. That's the first step. Second, they conduct a preliminary investigation for free, by the way. And there's a decision by the Commission on Ethics on whether or not there is probable cause to believe that there has actually been a violation of any ethics law. If there's no probable cause, the complaint is dismissed. There could potentially be attorney's fees assessed against the complainant for potentially bringing a frivolous complaint. However, if there is probable cause, it goes on to the third stage. So the complaint goes public at that point. And then the commission decides whether the law has actually been violated or the, the ethics, um, code has been violated and what is the recommended penalty? The accused has the right to a public hearing, basically a trial. Evidence is presented, witnesses are called. And if the commission determines that there are violations, at that point, they can make a recommendation to the state attorney's office for criminal prosecution. Or they can assess their own, um, penalty, uh, against the violator. So that, that is the process that I had recommended, uh, to this commission when we were first exploring this. And I just wanted to reiterate that at Ms. Cardy's request.
However, I also would like the attorney that has performed the service, uh, if he would be given an opportunity to also speak if, if the, if the commission desire that.
I'm sure, I'm sure they do.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rossman. Hi, Mr. Rossman. How are you?
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I, I appreciate, uh, this opportunity. I'm really here, I think more or less to answer questions. I don't uh, take issue with anything. I believe it's Ms. West that was just speaking. With anything she said about the Commission on Ethics, I will say that this is the sixth or seventh such investigation that um, I and my firm have been hired to do in these very similar situations. So it's not, it's not, um, un, it, it's, it's not strange to hire somebody that's an outsider to do investigation. Particularly somebody that has no ties to the community and doesn't really have a dog in the fight, as I like to say. So, um, uh, that's when city manager, the previous city manager reached out to me with, uh, instructions to look at the possible conflicts of interest. And I did that. It's just that as we did that, we see, and when I say we, I have an investigator that works with me as well. And, um, it seemed like the more we looked, the more we found. So, uh, there was a point in time when Mr. Bell called and said he wanted or needed a, a report completed. And I explained to him that that would not be possible in the timeframe given. But I had finished with one of what was three and then later became four, um, things to look at. And that was what we call the Krill Avenue Project. So that's the, what I referred to as interim report. Uh, I use that term because I was a prosecutor down here for 20 years and I've presented to the grand jury a bunch of times. So that's kind of what a grand jury refers to the report as. So it's also interim, just, just like, um, Ms. Cardy, in that it wasn't finished. It's not, um, it wasn't a finished project. In other words, in reference to all the other topics, it was finished as to that topic. It did make findings of fact. It did suggest conclusions. Um, but again, uh, there, to, to, to look any further, one of the, it seems like two of the other issues I was looking at, I think the, I think even tonight you have already voted on one of them. And I think that that's completed the river, riverfront project. So in my conversation with Ms. Cardy, I did not think it was a wise use of taxpayer dollars to, to have me further look into that. I mean, uh, if you want me to do so, I will do so. But it seems as though that, 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 um, project has been voted on and, um, accepted. So, so I'm just here to, to tell you that, that, that what I gave was a completed project as to one of the four um, sort of issues I was asked to look at in reference to possible conflict of interest. Or I should say, one of the four that, that jumped out as a possible conflict of interest. And, um, and then Ms. Cardy asked for a summary, which is the two-page summary I authored on September 19th. Hopefully, uh, all, all of you have read my report of September 11th, which including exhibits is 35 pages. And then the two-page summary with a, a, a one-page exhibit. Uh, and, and the involves what Ms. West said, references possibly to the Commission on Ethics, references possibly to the Seventh Circuit State Attorney's Office, um, if, if appropriate. So I don't think it's my call to, to make that kind of, um, suggestion. But I do think, I, I will say that much of what I've done has been in your newspaper, I guess, not necessarily my report. But the issues have been in the, the Placa Daily News. And I, I do know that, um, people in the state attorney's office are aware of it. Um, I've not spoken to anybody about any facts in reference to that. But that's why I'm here tonight to say that, um, I don't know what direction you want to give me. If you want me to continue looking, I will. Um, I just don't know the efficacy of that for the taxpayers.
And to that point, uh, as we spoke recently, um, Mr. Rossman was more concerned about, um, you know, referring it on to other agencies, um. You know, he, we do have an invoice of $8,000 and so he was concerned about the costs and so forth. And the fact that if he referred it out towards those agencies, that the city would no longer incur a cost. I did, however, communicate with him that the commissioners did want to pursue continuation, particularly of those three items that he identified in that final report summary. And so that's when we started talking about possibly referring outward, so.
I'm not sure which commissioner was first because I was looking, who was it? Was it Commissioner Jones or Boon?
Jones.
Well, he, he's going first.
Okay, Commissioner Jones.
I, I have two questions. The first one is, what investigation are you talking about? Do you have an identi, I mean, you say we have two, but this is both, uh, what's the investigation?
Um, go ahead.
If, i- if you're, is that your question directed to me?
He, yes.
Yes, sir. So there is an investigation of conflict of interest um, amongst, particularly with a, a particular employee or possibly employees, if the evidence were to show that. And, uh, that, I, I wrote a, an interim report, like I mentioned, on September 11th. That was, I presumed, given to you as members of the commission, which, you know, shows the investigation of the transaction in reference to what I refer to as the Krill Avenue Project. And that, uh, at the time, an employee had a, an ownership interest in an LLC that had stand financially to gain. And the employee was also working for the city at the time that certain ordinances were passed, votes were made. And there was no disclosure to the commission about that employee's interest in that LLC. And that's what I'm referencing.
Okay. Um, and what was your? I guess your final. Enter, no, no. Help me interpret that again. You said interim, but in your capacity that your work is considered complete.
Yes, sir. Uh, just, just as to that particular property, because there was so much paperwork, so many things to go through that at the time that Mr. Bell, the previous city manager, called and said he wanted a report, um, whether it was a progress report or, or whatever, I told him where we were in the investigation. And that in the time given, I could wrap up. I, I already had all the investigative work done. I just had not authored a report as to that yet. But I could author a report that would just basically show my findings as it relates to that one transaction. There were two other transactions that I was, that, that we were looking at. One was either the riverfront or riverside project, as it's referred to. And the third one was the K Larkin Avenue Airport Road transaction. And then after I was first engaged, I was asked to look at, uh, procurements with, um, Waddles. I believe it's office supply or Waddles Furniture. That came up. So, so we were trying to get them done as we could, but each one had layers to it, many, many layers to it, as you'll see in the report that I authored. So, um, so I have completed in reference to Pearl Avenue, drawn, make what I believe are findings of facts, supported by exhibits in each finding of fact. Um, conclusions that I believe are, are sustainable. And, but have not done so in reference to the other two projects, the other two land projects or Waddles.
You say Pearl Avenue or Krill, I see.
I'm saying Krill, K-R-I-L-L. I think it's Azalea Place is, is the, is may, maybe how it's referenced in your ordinance. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Borum.
You're welcome.
Something in just, uh, I'm just a little bit perplexed about, you know, the the stoppage of that. And, um, again, the taxpayers need to understand and know that the workings, what's happening and what people are instantly responsible and want to be good shepherds and stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And, um, again, this is, this is pretty deep. We just heard the man say, what does the attorney say? That everything he touched, he is, is, he find additional things. And these are some of the things that some of the community has reached out to me and talked to me about, the very concerning things. So that's what we see every year when we get those, um, forms from, uh, our auditors saying that, are we doing, do we have internal controls? Do we have controls in place to try to deter people from doing certain types of things? Whether they, uh, 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 whether they're violating things or whatever. And so it's clear from, from the attorney that there are some things that he haven't even closed out the first, um, option, and there was three. And so, yeah, I think it's incumbent upon the commission to make sure that we do everything that we can, because I've seen people who have been terminated for smaller things within our city in terms of just menial things. And there's a history of, of that. We can't just say, okay, that's enough and it's done. And we got people coming in wanting to know what's happening in our city. These are multimillion dollar transactions and different things of that nature. And, and the reason I voted the way I voted because of some of the conflicts of interest and things that I had learned about and things. So, uh, that's my, my whole concern is making sure that the taxpayer get what they need. And then if we got people who are operating with, um, the ethics and the morals, then we need to deal with that and we need to deter that.
Commissioner McCaskill.
If I may, Mr. Rossman, thank you. He provided interim, interim summary and a report to us. Um, if I may read something before I ask a question, redacting the name of the individual, is that something that I could do? I just want to read some, give a little.
That, that does make it public and currently
it's not.
It, by speaking, it makes it public, that information. Um, so that's within your discretion, but the, the report is not at this time officially a public record. Because the investigation is ongoing.
Well, if I may ask this question, based on some direction that we were given, based on some fights that were found and directions that were, direction that were given, because we have to give directions as to. Um, it, we've been kind of given direction to share this information with the state's attorney's office and the Seventh Judicial Circuit, Circuit and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. So I just want to make that based on the fights and the findings so that we'll know, because I know we can't talk butt up here and I want to make that open. So we'll be able to make us some good sound decisions. Good sound decisions and provide some direction.
And i- if I, if I may, uh, address that, I, I definitely have, um, like I said, from for 20 years from 1994 to 2014, actually 10 years ago today, I left the state attorney's office down here in Broward County. I was a prosecutor for 20 years and I certainly very familiar with investigations like this. And I am very familiar with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. So it was in a conversation with Ms. Cardy. Uh, I'm not trying not to make money as an attorney, obviously, that's, you know. I have a, I have a private business, but I was suggesting that if the commission authorized it, because you're my client for, for this type of investigation, that, uh, if the commission authorized it, I would reach out to somebody at the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to see, um, to be able to share my report with them so that they could determine whether or not they believe there's, um, means for them to investigate. Uh, I believe the answer to that is going to be an affirmative. And if that's the case, then I would cooperate with them, but that would not cost the city of Palaka taxpayers anything. They would, I would give them what I have already authored for you. And I would cooperate, answer any questions they wanted me to answer. But they are very, very well equipped to, um, further investigations such as this. And they do it out of their own budget, out of the state budget. So it doesn't cost the city of Plaka anything. If they find no probable cause, then nothing comes of it. If they do, then, you know, they take whatever action they deem necessary in concert with the Seventh Circuit State Attorney's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in essence, like in our conversation, basically he was wanting me to give direction. I said, no, this has to go to the commissioners and they will make that decision.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I just want to ask, um, would you like to pass the gavel?
Me?
Yeah, you passed them the last time. I didn't know if you want to pass the gavel on this and give direction with this one as well.
No.
Okay.
I, I think we've discussed. I just think at this point, I don't need to pass the gavel for any reason at this point.
Well, we're going to have to give direction and it has to be in the form of, of a motion, am I right?
So I can, I, I think we, I, I won't be making a motion, but I think that we have been given suggestions, recommendations. It makes sense to go to the next step. Somebody has to make the motion. I agree. It doesn't have to be. Me. Yes, please.
Forward with, uh, having Mr. Rossman, uh, go with the recommendation that he, uh, ended the initial report with, you know, it's a brain is thing full circle.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to move forward with having Mr. Rossman go with the recommendation that he ended the initial.
She's reading just the motion back. She's not.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to do it. It's sweet. Motion by Commissioner Campbell to move forward with having Mr. Rossman go with the recommendation that he ended the initial report with in order to bring this full circle. Second by Commissioner McCaskill.
Mr. Commissioner Jones.
So to be clear, you're saying, you're, you're requesting that he end this, what we received was the end of that one. That's not. And he go, I'm asking. I'm asking that he move forward and share the information with the. Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Okay.
Okay. We've had a motion in a second. And do you have another question, Commissioner Boon?
Oh, um, a question, but, uh, comment, comment question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, but the, the, the things that he listed on there, um, you know, we the 83, I think it was 8350, the charge.
Yeah, eight thousand something. Yes, sir.
Work for just one item that was not fully complete, right? One i- one item that was not fully complete, right? Cause you just, you just could.
No, sir. That one item is complete.
Okay, so that was the Krill, the Krill complete.
Yes, sir.
And there's three additions.
Then there are three more outstanding. Then there are three more outstanding that he wanted to pursue. That's what he's saying.
I I would say that it would not be, in other words, times three. A lot of the investigative work related to the others has been done, it's not completed. Um and I would point out that um the contract, you know, I do a lot of work with cities down here. The hourly rate is two eighty-five. I know the other investigation that you have going. It it, no, one eighty-five is my investigator. And you'll see, if you look at the the notes in my bill, there's a lot of things I just don't bill you for. Um but the other investigation, another firm you've engaged is three seventy-five with an expectation it's going to be thirty thousand dollars. I can tell you it would not be that. It would be my my, if I were to guestimate, and I hate to do that, it would be close to fifteen total, including the eighty-three already done. Somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars. Again, depending on what we find, if we find more in concert with Ms. McCarty, I would seek permission to go above that. But I would say all in, it's probably close to fifteen on the very outside, a couple thousand dollars over there. So the the rate you have is two eighty-five an hour. For my time, I try to have my investigator as much as possible at hundred eighty-five an hour. Um but I know that the other investigation you have is at three seventy-five an hour with three attorneys working on it at all times.
So so just just to finish my comment and question, the the things that we originally submitted to you in the write-up. Then I know there's a motion on the floor, but. It would be prudent to just complete that if it's only, because we had allocated ten thousand. We had allocated ten thousand and uh it's only another about five thousand or so, if you say total of fifteen. Uh so that will complete your work and you can work in tandem with the FDLE or. In the other agencies. I mean, that's, I think that would be the approach. It's only another five thousand that we, from what we budgeted. So I think it would bring things uh. Quicker back to the commission as it relates to just stopping what he's got in motion. He's got other work that he's done that's in play. So I think if he worked with the the guys who are. Who are not charging for the additional five thousand, look at what more, much more we're getting from that. But that's just my recommendation. Uh that's just my recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion a second on the floor. Um um uh any of those in favor, please say aye. Roll call, I'm sorry, Sonny, we've talked about roll call.
Thank you, Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Yay.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Yes.
Mayor Robert Correa.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rossman.
Thank you very much. And I presume Ms. uh Cardy will reach out to me uh and kind of ex- explain how. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you very much for allowing me to go on Zoom. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um again, there were two employees, discussion direction of the other employee.
Just give me a second, please. Ms. uh Jones, are you able to come up? From reference to uh item five E, I believe.
I don't believe we're at item five E yet.
Where are we?
On five D still.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, she'll be next. Sorry about that. Okay, so. Uh in that yet. So. Um I know Mr. Bell is no longer here, so I'm not certain. We just wanted guidance as to should we continue on? What are we doing?
I think it's only fair that we continue on with that investigation as well.
Yes, sir.
So that across the board, it'd be same treatment, no, no preferential treatment.
I agree too. And I think in fairness to all parties, the names should be cleared if possible for both individuals.
Absolutely.
I think we have to treat it equally.
So. I move to, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just want to clarify, he did bring up the fact that the other firm did say it would not exceed thirty thousand. They would be charging an hourly rate of three hundred seventy-five dollars. However, they were only, it would be three attorneys wrecking, working together, one lead attorney. And the only time that they will will be charged at one time is when they get together and summarize. A lot of the work has been completed, so we'll cut down on the costs as well as lodging. We talked about um a fat, a manner to do it in which it could be very um. Um folks won't be privy to who the um who the complainants are. And that would prevent the investigators from having to come to town. They can do it in a manner, so that cuts down on lodging and costs. Um and they will give us, uh they are willing, I had to reach back out because it was open. When we left the last time, whether or not we were going to proceed. However, um. They um, the company is willing to provide us with increments of 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 points they reach. If they reach five thousand, eight thousand, you know, so they'll keep us informed as the amount.
Could we request them to uh. Conduct phone interviews or uh Zoom rushes coming through, I mean, because they could come here on a flight. And only interview somebody for ten minutes and that's a.
That's what we talked about. We already talked about doing it via Zoom so that um the complainants can do, complainants can do it at their. In a manner in which they feel safe and safe and comfortable um and cut down on time. Again, remember um statements have been provided, so that helped alleviate a lot of the time and and the cost. It'll help curb the cost. But um that was one of the things we talked about. So that is they're willing to do phone and Zoom interviews.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, uh yeah, I I do think that um both should go for, but at the same time, I think. We had one already in the works and I think they got shortchanged as it relates to the amount of money that was um expended. And related to that. And this, the second investigation that we have is it can go up to thirty thousand. Well, and not to exceed. So I think the the first one got shortchanged uh and abruptly stopped. And the second one, which is uh gonna be open to the fourth thing. And I think we should, we should have it, but I don't know if we're gonna get good cooperation from somebody who's no longer with the city. Now, it's good that you'll get the feedback from the staff. We need that. But we're not gonna get, I I don't believe we're gonna get a good uh feedback from somebody who's no longer with you, that who's part of an investigation.
I I do understand and thank you for bringing that up, but I do think it gives that individual again the opportunity. Because included in the investigation is for that individual to have the opportunity to um be aware, made aware of the allegations. And have the opportunity to respond to the allegations as well as provide any witnesses that he would like to be interviewed. So I think that process will help that individual to clear his name or, you know, help with. Him as well in the process.
That that's fair. I mean, I I don't have a problem with that, but uh the other piece was that I just think the first. Um investigation was cut short.
Yes, sir.
And they had things that they were actively working on and had more stuff. And so we're gonna jump over here to this other one and it's still open to thirty thousand. And we just short, shortchanged this to eighty-three fifty. So that's just my point.
So so are you suggesting that we uh bring a toss down commission, commission or what? What do you suggest?
No, it's already, I mean, we voted on it. I don't wanna, I don't want to shortchange anything. I'm just saying, the first investigation was short, shortchanged. The second one is open. So that's just the um the fairness and equity um that I'm looking at as it relates to the investigation. If the investigation need to be the investigation, we set the, we set the amount and uh we just shortchanged one. And then the other one is open to thirty thousand. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And I I think, and I if I'm out of order here, I think what's going, the difference between the two is that. In this this first one that we discussed, um FDLE is going to be involved and that's a. A higher level of investigation. So I think that may help with the concern that you have because it did. You know, there was a scope of limitation when it came to the cost of the investigation.
I understand, but we just heard from the attorney, basically, he said that it'd be another. Um six thousand plus dollars just to kind of complete it because he already had a number of things that. He was in play that nearly completed and all my uh concern was that that he's already almost complete. He was called to to stop and he he communicated that he was almost complete. And only he could still work hand in hand with the other agency that might help bring the thing quicker. So that's just, you know, I just, I just got that now. I don't want to, you know, go back and forth.
No, I I just want clarification. We're not, I if I'm, and I'm glad you brought it up because I want to be clear. If I'm not mistaken, I thought that he said that his cost is eight thousand. If we decide to go ahead and um go ahead with uh either the uh the judicial circuit. And the state's attorney's office and or FDLE, that his cost would stop at the eight thousand. And there would be no further cost and they would take pickup.
And he would work with. He had achieved and give you that information.
Yeah, so I just.
Commissioner Jones.
So you made the point. The same goes for the other investigation because those, that investigation, Ms. West, because you didn't clarify this one. They have an entity too that they could have went to. What avenue could those people went through for their complaint?
The nature of the complaints are very different. The first is a conflict of interest, which is a vi- potential violation of Florida's ethics law. So in in that regard, the Commission on Ethics is an available resource for the city to conduct that investigation. My understanding is the nature of the second complaint has nothing to do with ethics. It's a hostile uh work environment.
And and that is covered under another government agency, EEOC.
EEOC.
So they could have had a low cost of no cost investigation to that one as well. That wasn't offered or haven't been discussed as Commissioner Bourne was talking about. So um. And when you're talking about equity, let's 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 consider all and all, all avenues. Because that wasn't offered just then on that. So, yeah.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Wait, okay, are you saying which one was?
I I say, I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Bourne on the cost.
Yeah.
It's it's because on both employees are not here anymore.
Yeah.
So where do we go? You you're talking about one according to the attorney. I'm just listening as you guys listen. He's talking about some legal ramifications. Uh as far as the other one, it's civil in which it's not gonna have anything to do with the city. It's, that's gonna be more of a uh individuals.
Yeah, okay.
Do you agree, Ms. West?
Yeah, I get where you're going.
Yeah, it's it's different.
So 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 at the cost, we're not gonna let them run up a thirty thousand dollar bill. I I I say you may have a review at ten thousand and they come back to us. Is that what you're kind of saying, Commissioner Bourne, or no?
Um, yes, yes. And also, you know, it's just the fact that uh the first one got closed out. At eight eighty-three fifty and now this is open to the thirty thousand and that's what was agreed upon.
And we did talk about that. I went back, if the commission recall about, I went back and spoke with them about that. And when once we reach again, they will let us know um when they reach certain points. And if they get to that ten thousand dollar mark, they will let us know. And from there, if we decide to go on or continue on, they'll let us know where we are in the process. So I did go back and reach out to them.
The thirty thousand is not a problem. I I I want a complete investigation on both sides or whatever. I did, that that's what I'm looking for. A complete, and that's why I said fairness and equity as it relates to the investigations. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying shortchange anything.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think it's important for us to still take in consideration what we were presented at the time as commission. And we had in-depth discussion with regards to the cost that came from both of the inquiries. Um however we want to call it. So I think that we're at this point, we didn't decide to close it at eight thousand. That's what the recommendation came at. So I I don't want us to be confused as far as when we going for. Making the comparison that one, just because the number is greater than the other, that it's not a complete investigation. Again, the interim investigation discovered some additional things that the uh Mr. Roseman wanted to delve into. More specifically, but again, I don't want it to appear as if either the uh two totally different things. But we talked about this at the time that it was presented to us and we agreed at the time with the given cost. And we had the ability to bring forth any scale or payment scale. Um that was brought to us. So I just want to make sure that that is taken in consideration and that is put out there that we don't want to make it appear as if. Just because one is greater than the other, that both did not get the attention that it desperately needed.
But the the thing with that is, and and I think how it occurred was that when um the interim asked for. Before former city manager love, he asked for an update or status update. And I think um the interim asked for, yeah, he she thought that. The commission wanted to wrap it up because we asked for a status, but that was not what the intention was. And I sent that to you in an email as that was not the intention to stop it. And I think that's what ended up happening. So for clarity.
Right. So can I get clarification, please? All right, um with Mr. Rossman, do, are are we saying that we want him to go ahead and go to what he called his natural end? And what he recommended there that it would go to a max of about fifteen thousand? Are are you saying that that is what, what is, what are you saying? Because I thought that's what we said.
And that's what he said, his natural end would be the fifteen thousand.
Will be a max of fifteen.
Correct.
He did say that, but we did make a motion.
But that's what, that's what I'm saying. Please clarify, if a motion has been made, that he can go ahead and reach his natural end.
My motion was for him to move to the next phase.
Which was to make the reference and continue working.
Yes.
It was, well, it was continue working, but.
Go ahead, son. Make the motion.
Yes, it was. Move to the next phase, which was the recommendation for him to move forth and go to.
Yeah, the three items.
The three i- three items, but to go to.
And make the reference.
The references that the judicial and thing, yeah.
That's what you said. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Okay, so if I can just get some clarification on this latest investigation. There has been authorization from the commission for the thirty thousand, I forget the name of the law firm this.
For an hourly charge of three hundred seventy-five, not to exceed thirty thousand. With updates leading up to that. However, if we reach the the ten thousand mark, to be fair. We can stop at that point. We can stop at any point, but they will keep us informed of where they are in the process.
And they're going to be reporting to you.
They will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
Well.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And there's no disrespect, totally. Being that the person um is no longer here, should this not go back into the hands of our HR department?
Oh, that's a good point. Legal.
Because I think concerns were more so reporting to those individuals. So that's the only reason I brought forth.
I think that's a good idea.
Ms. West.
I think we were seeking direction with this agenda item. My recollection and forgive me, but I am coming off of COVID, so I've got COVID brain. My recollection was you did approve of executing the retainer green for snuffing and smell.
Sniffing and spelman.
Sniffing and smelling for up to thirty thousand with check-ins at the ten thousand level. Is that recollection correct?
Yes, but I need to ask for a very brief recess for some reasons. Can I ask for like a two-minute recess? Please.
Yes, but can we answer the question about?
I need a two-minute recess.
Okay, the uh two-minute recess, are we all okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
On the table from Ms. West was whether this can now be, the H R department can now be responsible for. The oversight of this investigation and communication with the firm.
There there are some, nothing that prohibits that. And the issue before was that. The director of the H R department's boss was the person being investigated and. Because that person is no longer here, that's no longer an issue.
Okay. And are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Great. And so is there any further discussion on this topic?
Thank you.
What's the, what's the, yeah, what's the direction?
Is that direction that she reports it back to us?
H R.
H R takes over the role that Commissioner McCaskill has been functioning in.
And I will consult with H R.
As Commissioner McCaskill would have.
And I will consult with you and bring you up to date and then pass it on.
Yeah.
The only reason that it wasn't given to our H R department was given. Attorney was um stated, but now that it's no, that issue, I think it will be less of their. Come down to making sure that no one receives no more information.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um I don't know if this is appropriate and I know it kind of went along with the the mediator coming in. You know, I know that was something is that we say we still wanted that team building person to come in, if that's not now to talk about.
Team building, team building is not um solely. I think it's something that will be beneficial. To these employees of the city, um even given what we are now, I think some kind of um. While our builder, facilitator.
In that diversity.
Yeah.
Okay, so one of the things you all, uh I was given directives to do. I was given directives to do was to go back and um look at the pool of individuals that applied during that time. When we had the team builders to come in and there were only four, we did decide as a commission that the one, the ones, the entity. That provided the training, um the team building exercise, we did not want to go with them. However, we do, I do have the three. If um I can submit this to the clerk or and the clerk can provide this to the commission. And we can decide if we wanna look at these three entities and go with them or whatever direction we want to go in. But I did do that. And here they are. Mayor, if I may.
With that said, is there any other discussion about the team building?
So is that something that we could, one, and they can. Uh we can get that to the other commissioners and maybe um put it on the next meeting, next agenda? Is that something that you all would like to do?
Thank you. Onto item E. Adapt Resolution twenty twenty-four R one nine five. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-four R one ninety-five, a resolution of the City of Palacca, Florida, setting the salary of Marcia J. Cardy while interim city manager of the City of Palacca and providing for governor's heirs.
Madam American Missionist, um so what um you have before you is um I took the opportunity to try to factor in with Ms. Cardy. Also performs as a full-time finance director and stepping into the position of interim city manager. Um I have three different scenarios here that I've listed out for you all, the current practice. Which basically states that's just a thousand dollars um a month. For added to the salary for them to operate in that um capacity when they're moving to a different position. Um the current, and the current, but so the that's the current practice. Our current policy actually states on um page sixteen. In our personnel manual, um it's um letter B says administrative or supervisor employees. Who are called out um to about to work in another position, they should be paid at their normal base pay at straight time. And this shall be paid from the budget requesting the assistance. So with Ms. Cardy working in the city manager position as well as the finance. Hours that she works um outside of the finance director should be paid at her rate. For the hours that she performs city manager. That's according to policy. So this is where I'm getting my numbers from. Um I also pulled out some things that says best practices, um that gives um totally different um figures as well. Um my recommendation, um from everything that I looked at and how it played out is that. Um we stay with the existing policy that provides for the extra compensation for hours worked beyond her regular job responsibilities. And so and this um advice is based on the time being spent fulfilling the necessary duties for both the assigned positions. And the table above um in your packet is gonna include the calculation for an additional twenty. I did it for two, twenty additional hours, ten a week or fifteen a week, performing city managers duty. If any of you all have probably been by here, she's in here seven days a week. Um so she's well overperforming. Ten additional hours a week um for that job. So twenty bi-weekly would put her salary and I gave you a list of. What her salary rate is if we're looking at the hourly rate. Um and what it would be if we added on the bi-weekly additional for twenty hours, which is at the top of the, should be third page. Um twenty additional hours at her hourly rate, which is current. Um and that would be the additional bi-weekly rate. So she would go from the bi-weekly rate of the forty-six eighty-three to a bi-weekly rate of fifty-eight fifty-three eighty. That's according to our current policy. We have, yes, that's not it.
Any questions?
Well, that's not what's on the board.
It's right, it's on page five nineteen, um five eighteen for the base, current base salary and five. On the chart on page five hundred nineteen. Would be. You can look at five nineteen. And it has that from four thousand six hundred eighty-three.
Yes.
To five thousand eight hundred.
Fifty-three eighty, yes, ma'am.
Put it up there, son.
Page five hundred nineteen.
Keep going, Sonny. Keep going.
It's right there.
There. So that's based on policy. So an additional twenty hours, which is ten per week. Um would give an additional bi-weekly salary from her current rate um of one thousand one hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. So added to what she currently is making would take her bi-weekly pay to the fifty-eight fifty-three eighty. If we factored in fifteen additional hours per week, which would be thirty, that would be the difference from the forty-six eighty-three to the sixty-four thirty-nine twenty. Um I took the, my recommendation was the twenty when we're trying to factor in twenty additional hours and that's based on a two-week pay period. Which she probably does much more, which would simply take her pay up to the fifty-eight fifty-three eighty on bi-weekly pay. Versus the forty-six eighty-three.
Any discussion? She is on twenty-four hour responsibility in that role.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, sharing vehicles here.
Yeah.
And in addition to the storm um time that.
So I think we need to be fair.
Oh, that's not a question.
Yeah, being fair, that's not a question.
Actually, she's getting paid less than she need to be getting paid. She need to be getting paid for. Fill in the role, I mean.
Ms. McCaskill, Ms. Commissioner McCaskill.
I think we're on the, um we're we're good as far as making sure she's being paid fairly, but we also need to think about the hours she was here Saturday and. Her working as many hours as she has and has to in these dual roles. Um not to overexert her. Um so I do want to have a conversation about something as well, but definitely, she's been here working.
Nonstop.
Nonstop, but I do want to have a conversation about something.
And I got a question as it relates to her being in the role and um thing with that is, are you. Um comfortable doing what you're doing now in terms of your capacity and sustainability? That's, you know, that'd be.
Thank you for asking. Um I'm very comfortable. Uh I enjoy what I do. I love coming in and working. I. I love challenge. I like the fact that uh we are on a path of improving our city and facing whatever the. Whatever's going on. So I am great. Uh I try to be here by seven thirty and, you know. Leave at about six thirty. I'm good. I enjoy what I do. And um I'm having a lot of fun doing what I'm doing. So um I have a great team. And we all work together very well. Uh we, our attitude is uh we see the problem or we foresee the problem. And we also try to determine the solution. So to your question, how am I? I'm good. And I won't be working as much as you see me. I just needed to get some things done, so don't worry about that. Okay, I won't be overworking so much or nothing like that.
So so are you good with the rate?
I'm good with what, whatever you all do. I'm not here for money, money. I'm here because I enjoy what I do. Whatever you all feel is the right thing, I'm gonna agree with you. Okay. That's why I'm at.
Anybody else?
Um it's good, it's good to hear that she is um comfortable and happy in a role and it seems like staff is. Um I I I'm just concerned and I know you you love what you do. I can tell that I haven't seen a change, but the the um. Being able to do both roles to fidelity, I know would be very difficult wearing two hats. I don't know if we were con- would consider. I know we talked about contracting out. At one point, not actually saying a particular uh entity, but if that's something that we want to. You know, entertain as well, you know, but in as in the meantime, making sure that she's compensated fairly. While she's serving in that role, but I do think that we still should consider contracting out.
Okay, so for the moment, um with staff assistants and uh appointment scheduling and so forth. Uh the city management role is pretty much from seven thirty to eleven thirty. I then rode to the back uh until the finance director. Uh responsibilities and then usually around four, four thirty, I start back working with city. So in essence, it turns out five hours city management, five hours finance director. And um I would like to be given the opportunity to re- reach out if I'm, if I feel like it's too much, I I will definitely. Be the first person to come to you and say, okay, I think we need change.
Yeah, and we've been here before a number of times. I mean, been on the commission since twenty fifteen and I think we're about twelve, thirteen. Uh city managers and a permanent, permanent and permanent and part-time. And I think we injected a lot of. Uh people um to our 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 staff and got stability. Uh we have sensitive things that we're currently dealing with right now um in terms of investigation, among other things, a lot of sensitive things and. Got some people who are rallied and pull things together. So to continue to um. Interrupt, interrupt uh something that's moving forward, what could be. Uh detrimental again to the to the staff. We keep introducing new things. I think we should set a timeline. In terms of looking at what we can do to continue to not bring in. New or introduce new things. We got a cur- uh uh in two investigations going on right now. A lot of sensitive things has has happened, land transit, all these different things. So to to bring in a new. Whatever into the process without giving direction. We haven't, we we haven't even um done not a single. A single city manager uh evaluation and we had kicked that around a number of different times. So we got to set. The stage, set the tone, set the direction and be able to provide something to. Anybody who's coming in to know what we're doing. We got the mission, vision, strategy, things in place moving forward and a number of other things. So I think um introducing something new is would be uh tough.
I agree with Commissioner Borm. I think we have, and I get finally some stability and we need to keep that, but we need to have the groundwork. Ready for the next person to come into the job and and the expectation set. And I think we've started to work on that. Um and we need to finish all of that, but before we even start contemplating hiring somebody else, but I. If Ms. Cardy is comfortable and she says she is, but what is our timeline you suggested? And I I don't disagree with that either, that we need to start coming up with some timelines.
Well, I just think what we need to do fir- first, day one, what would the new um person do going forward? We don't even have that in place. We didn't have it for Mr. Bell when he came on. And so we had a lot of things as as in terms of. Missed the direction was not clear on a number of different things. Um I think we need a pause for a minute to at least float out and make sure that we have something if there's gonna be. A change or a recommended change. Have something to give the person. If there's a change so that we can all be on the same page and understand and know what the expectations are. Irregardless, we need that, the the community need that. But to continue to change things quick and fast, we've we've done, done things. And not the, not the correct way so many times. And we 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 got to slow down and make this happen. In in a, in a good and positive way. Either way, folks.
But you brought up a valid point. Again, um I think that all of what you said, um take, we need, we take into consideration. Again, she, I I she, I think she's doing a great job, but we do need to consider that she's. Serving in dual roles. We don't want to get to the point wherein she does get to that point and. She's exhausted and overworked and can't serve both roles to fidelity. We don't want one department to suffer over the other. Um so again, I agree with setting some time. Some time, um some time, you know, deadlines of how how long we. deadlines of how, how long we want her to serve in this role. Remember, we do have our senior advisors, the range riders that can come in, but we do need to consider that.
Right. Yes, and, and you're completely right as, I mean, as that stated, but we've had those same resources available before. And again, this former ACM who served in that capacity, worked over a year in that capacity. We had others who's also worked a little bit longer in, in, in those capacities. So again, anybody who has gotten in there and was doing dual roles, I mean, we, we paid them, we compensated them and we monitored them and made sure that they were, they were good in fact, and also to have these other things in play, I think is good. So either way, I just want to make sure that we have something in place so that anybody who takes over that spot know what the commission wants moving forward with what we have. That's all I'm asking.
And with that, what is on the agenda is to determine or approve the salary.
Right.
For the interim city manager. So based on HR's recommendation, how do we want to go forward with the twenty hours, thirty? I'm putting it out there just for questions or inputs.
So the one that you recommended is the one that's, the twenty hours right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Best practices. Okay. Not opposed to that.
Anybody else have any thought?
I make a recommendation that we go along with HR's recommendation to accept the recommendation and pay Ms. Carty.
So that.
The recommended salary. Yes.
We have motion? Do we have a second?
Second, for the sake of discussion, want to make sure that she's good, you know, second for the sake of discussion to make sure that she, are you, are you good with that or you want more or less?
No, I'm fine. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
I would like to see for sake of, should we come back to this point for consideration that you take or consider keeping a log so that we can make, ensure that you are fairly compensated? Because I'm, I'm for the thirty, because I've seen.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was for the thirties.
Well, I was making the second move in the meeting though, so let's.
You're not, you're not working.
Moving the meeting on, we got, this is, this is like a new in the city.
She said she was okay with it.
But she's okay with it, but is it really?
Our recommendation still is that I think that she should maintain a log so that we can make sure that in the, in the event that we come back and have a discussion with regards to how we are going to move forward. Either way, that we take in consideration compensation if we need to.
So we go with the twenty hours and she keeps the log and we come back to the table, definitely.
We could discuss moving it up.
How about we do it in advance and say up to, you know, it, you know, that way she can keep her log. She can keep her log and just say up to and then get it approved by the commission. I think that might be fair, but it's up to.
We already have a motion.
Okay, well, we're rolling with that and then just keep the law and go from there. We'll come back and make a ruling.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thanks. It's on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. When are we gonna talk about maybe the time certain? Would that be something, a different time or is that Mr.?
Should we have it on the next agenda?
Right, and then we can kind of brainstorm.
Let's place it on the next agenda.
Do that and then have some things in place and looking at rolling it out so that.
Absolutely.
Just keep the city manager discussion on the agenda.
Right, next, next meeting.
Thank you.
We got it. On to public hearings. A, Ms. Krantz.
Ordinance twenty-two-four thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the city of Palac, Florida, be amended from commercial neighborhood C-one to the city of Palac multifamily residential R-three. We're planning unit development overlay for the following property located at six-two-oh-one St. John's Avenue, Palac, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven, parcel number ten, ten-two-six-zero-zero-zero-zero, zero-one-three-zero-zero-zero-six-zero, providing for severability, providing for scrivener service and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Gamer?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners Group. This application that is in front of you today consists of annexation, a future land use, map amendment, and a rezoning for two combined parcels. The ultimate intent of the applicant is to develop a multifamily residential community consisting of two-hundred-and-forty-eight dwelling units. Like I said, these are, these are two combined parcels. Parcel A consists of approximately twenty-four and a half acres. Is currently within the unincorporated Panda County. And the applicant is requesting the parcel to be annexed into the city and to change existing Panda County future line designation from urban service to the city's residential medium designation. Their request is also for rezoning the parcel from the counties R-one to the city's residential multifamily R-three with the planned unit development overlay. The other parcel is approximately six acres and is within the boundaries of the city. The applicant is requesting to resign the parcel from neighborhood commercial to multifamily residential R-three with the planned unit development overlay. So both parcel will have the same line designation and the same zoning classification.
Is the applicant here?
Oh, yes. Let me just finish. All.
Sorry.
All the requested petitions are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the zoning code as well as with the Parteena Florida statutes, as it demonstrated in the staff report that is part of your package. Staff recommends approval to the request and asks the commission to adopt ordinance twenty-eleven, ordinance twenty, I mean, twenty-four-eleven, ordinance twenty-four thirteen and ordinance twenty-four, twenty-two-four fourteen. Yes, me, Shaleen Estes, representative from the applicant is here and she would like to make a short presentation to the commission.
Give us your name for the record and your town residing.
My name is Shaleen Estes. I'm with Four Star and I live in St. John's County. Hi, thank you. It's very late. I put together a presentation and sent it over and we can go through that. I just, it's a brief presentation to kind of give you some background on who Four Star is and the site plan was in your package. So you should have been able to see that there probably in better view than you might be able to see it here. Again, I'm Shaleen Estes with Four Star and there we go. Just a, a brief background about Four Star. We are throughout the entire United States, twenty-four states, sixty different markets. We are a publicly traded company. We do have a subsidiary majority owned by D.R. Horton. They have a, they're single-family builder. We are developer and they have the first right of an offer on any of our lots that we develop. And I fully disclose that because, you know, we are partially owned by them, so. The team that will be working on and has been working on this project is, I've provided everybody there. You guys work a lot with Steven Speaks, but Tim Atkinson is actually currently working on some of the St. John's Avenue improvements that are happening over there. So he's very familiar with the city and the county as well as ECS and Carter Environmental. I have heard over the past, the commission bring up during site development, application conversations, what, you know, what is it gonna look like? So I thought it was pretty significant and important that I made sure that you were able to see some of the developments that Four Star is currently working on right now throughout Jacksonville, St. John's County, Clay County. And we've got another one that we're looking at over on the other side of Putnam County right now. So we're all over. We're not just in one area, but our division specifically are these counties. The project itself, McClory Cove, is the name of our project and we're about three and a half, four miles west of city hall right now. We are directly next to the hospital and south of the airport. And it's, as Lorenzo provided, it's kind of an enclave with Putnam County because they still own this southern parcel that we have included in this application. We did vacate the McClory Road. The county was happy to vacate that. They said, go ahead. If you want to take that, you take that. So they were happy to turn that over to us. There was no objection with any of the utilities or the county at all, as well as the city. So here's just a brief, you know, bird's eye view of the site itself. It's two-hundred-and-forty single-family, fee simple townhomes. There's not a rental community. It's individually owned homes. The entire civil plan is already in for review with the county. They were, they were kind enough to allow us to go ahead and just put that in so they could start looking at it and give us some feedback on anything that they saw ahead of time. But we are code compliant. We've exceeded code in other areas. And as we begin to work with the county on that review, we'll continue to enhance the program a little bit more. The next slide just is a, a bigger view of the site itself. Again, the benefits of bringing a residential community, I won't go through all of these, but not to, the biggest one obviously is it is an economic opportunity for the city, bringing a tax base to the city where the tax base, as you understand, as the commission, you know, helps with things like services, schools, safety, sanitation and things like that. I know you have your ad valorem on the agenda tonight and the budget. And if I've done my math right, these two-hundred-and-forty-eight individual town home units, property taxes, if we could forward two slides, you'll see that it would bring return to the city almost four-hundred thousand annual tax base. So I know that's gonna change based on your agenda items, but you know, that ad valorem should help the city with some of those services. The next slide is a typical schedule of, you know, once we move past the entitlement period, the program itself for development would be close to fifteen to seventeen months of development for the land itself. We are not the home builder. We do not do anything vertical. So I can't give you an exact market-driven condition timeline on when things would go vertical. But typically it would be fifteen months for development and then about another year and a, yeah, a year to year and a half for the vertical building to start going up. So with that said, I mean, I think Lorenzo was able to answer a lot of the, or address a lot of the items on the application itself. And if you have any other questions, I'm here.
Have any questions?
I, I have just a question as it relates to, okay, you say it'll take about what, it's about fifteen, seventeen months or wherever.
Yes, sir.
Go vertical. I know we have approved a number of different annexations and projects. We had another one just up the road from on your St. John's Avenue. Just past Ziegler where big parcel was set up there and I don't think they broke ground yet, have they? Yeah, and, and so we, we, we get a lot of, have they broken, broken ground on the major project that we approved well about four, five years ago? Four years?
Are you referring to the cottages?
Yeah.
On St. John's?
Yeah.
Yeah, the site plan has been commenced a few months ago. They haven't issued a building permit yet because ownership has changed, so that delayed the process. But I, I believe they're in the process of getting the building permit now.
Yeah, I just do know that we've had a number of things. We keep improving, but there's some ma- major delays or no act, no activity. They fade away. And also we have another big project that was out here. Was it on Creel? Creel, yeah, big, two-hundred-and-seven units.
The what?
That's, that's where we are.
That, that's, this is the project, two-hundred-and-forty-eight.
St. John's, between St. John's and Creel.
Right.
We're in McClory, you know, in McClory.
Okay, but there was another, there was a Creel project out here by the hospital, wasn't it?
Oh, that's Silver Bay. That's Silver Bay. And that's going up. Yes. Yes.
So we just need to see some kind of activity. We get people who come in and interested. We make these approvals and working with our builders and most of the time they come back. We, you know, we don't see it for several years.
I'm actually happy to address that. And that, that is actually one of the reasons why I gave you some background on Four Star because of the size of our company and who we are. Our intent is to get our approvals, go through our civil, you know, plan review and then get our permits and move forward. That, that was the main reason why I made sure that you saw who we were, so you would feel comfortable knowing that. I'm, I'm kind of aware of the one to the left, to the west of us.
Yes.
I, that is not who we are.
Appreciate that.
Sure. Absolutely.
So the cottage is, is west of this location?
Yes.
Yes, it is west. And the site, the site has already been cleared and preparation has begun. I believe they're putting some of the, the infrastructure underground. And they're going through the county for the building permit. And we, we keep an eye on it because, you know, once the building permission is issued, then the city can collect or at least invoice the impact fee. So I keep a close eye on it.
Okay, we appreciate that. We just, we'd like to see, we'd like to see dirt turning.
So do we. So do we. Thank you for that.
So was this intentional left blank, Lorenzo? Where it says, application request, applicant request, background, project analyst, analysis, excuse me, and recommendation? It's in your packet.
I can speak to that, Lorenzo. That's a staff report that's generated by our system automatically. I have to remember to turn it off. So if I let one of those sneak through, I do apologize, but his staff report is in the, is in the pocket.
I see. And my other question is about creating enclaves and I know we're gonna talk about five-year plan and, and, and more development issues. This is way outside of the city limit and what I would like to see.
Looks like that.
Us as a commission and as a, us as a city to start squaring off our city boundaries. Because we, we skip people who desire to be annexed in the city and we go way out and include a project. Nothing about your project, because I think it's a great project, but we include and we bring in new projects. But we have people, again, I think I mentioned in the Baylenville area that don't have city water and sewer. So we could do some infill in that area. I would like to really see that happen. I don't know about the rest, the desire, the rest of the commission. But, you know, people who are desiring to be included and get annexed and get water and sewer that we could provide because we have a capacity and we're bringing in projects that's big, that's creating an enclave, I think, and doing some leapfrog, which I, we talked about on that Creel Avenue project. I want to make mention of that.
Yeah.
But as far as, the second thing is, I want to make certain, I have to ask this question. Will there be any conflicts of interest that we don't know about that may surface or that may have any direct ties to this project?
Commissioner Jones, first, this is an existing enclave. So this is not. Commissioner Jones, first, this is an existing enclave. So this is not outside of the, the city boundaries. This is an enclave and they're going to reduce the enclave. It's still going to be one parcel that is going to be an enclave. But it's just reducing the existing enclave and it's consistent with the Florida statute, which calls for the elimination of enclaves. To your second question, I have no idea, Commissioner. I don't know where it's a conflict. I mean, I couldn't tell that.
So with, just with new information we found tonight, could you? Is there any way we could check that illegally? We need to actually make certain because it was mentioned earlier that we've already made a decision on something that we had no knowledge about. So I don't want it to come in upon the radio radar. We, we, we don't have information in front of us like in the past. And, and the only thing we get is you guys approved it.
Well, we, we have to make sure when the application is submitted to us, that the ownership is clear. That the applicant has control of the land, either, you know, is the property owner or have authorization with the property owner to submit the application. That's all that we, when we receive an application, that's what we make sure that it, that it complies with. And then we proceed, you know, to do our review and to bring it to public hearings. Planning, planning commission, I mean, planning board under the city commission.
I, I do understand that, but we do have, based upon what we're going through right now, we have a due diligence to start looking a little deeper because things have been coming in and they have red parents and we don't know anything about it. That's why I asked you about this blank page. I am going to look and I'm asking that question. So it's, I'm asking it to you. I mean, that's like Ms. McCarty.
I, I appreciate that.
Do that, please.
Right. And I've just conferred with legal. If you may say what we just talked about.
Yeah. So certainly by the time this comes before the second hearing, I can look into the, the corporate entities behind.
Just make sure we do that going forward. So.
Even considering having a form where the applicant signs.
Close, yes.
That there's no conflict.
Right. And that's why, that's why we're going to go.
Something of that nature. So that way we know that we did look at it.
Right.
And we performed our due diligence. That's all we're trying to do.
I was going to ask to see if we can modify the application.
I did confer with legal. Okay. Okay. Is that satisfied? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other question?
How many units she said in?
Two hundred and forty eight.
Two forty eight.
Two forty eight, right.
Yes. Forty eight.
She's sounding confident.
Anybody else?
I, I don't think so.
Thank you.
We're going to open the floor to public comment. Is anybody here for public comment on this particular item? And now we'll close public comment. Do we have a moment?
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Please, Kranz, on to the next item.
Thank you. It's actually the same item, Madam Mayor. The ordinance before you just now was ordinance twenty twenty four thirteen rezoning the parcel that is currently within the city limit subject to this. So moving on, still subject to this, is going to be your ordinance twenty twenty four R eleven, annexing the other parcel.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty twenty four eleven, an ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palac, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as parcel number ten, ten, twenty six, four, zero, zero, one, three, zero, 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 one, zero, located at McClory Drive, Black, Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palac and amending the future land use map with respect to said parcel of land from Putnam County Urban Service US to city of Palac, a residential medium density, providing for scribners errors and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Gama, anything more that needs to be said? Or you want to say?
Staff still recommends approval and adoption of the ordinance.
Do we want the applicant to come up? Any questions with the applicant?
Same applicant, no.
It's the same application with three different ordinances.
Yeah.
Because there are two parcels involved.
Oh, the same.
Shoot, you someone?
Someone over there.
Second.
Your motion is second. Is there anybody here for public comments? Seeing none, public comments closed. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to twenty twenty four fourteen.
Yes, ma'am. Moving along to, to the rezoning regarding the same parcel. Ordinance number twenty twenty four fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the city of Palac, Florida be amended for Putnam County Residential Single Family R one, the city of Palac, a multifamily residential R three with a planned unit development overlay for the following property located in McClory Drive, Black, Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven. Parcel number ten, ten, twenty six, four, zeros, zero, one, three, zero, 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 one, zero, providing for severability, providing for scribners errors and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Gama, basically the same.
Is the same, Madam Mayor.
Anybody questions? Okay.
Second.
Good motion, second. All in favor? Aye. I didn't open the public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, close public. Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
On to B sixteen.
Sixty, ordinance number twenty twenty four, ten.
Sure. Get that right.
An ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, amending the Palac Municipal Code, combining sections thirty, two, one, four, vacant structure registration and thirty, two, one, five, foreclosed blighted, unsecured or abandoned structures. Registration and amending appendix A. Fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palac, Florida, as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter ten alcoholic beverages. Chapter thirty, registration of vacant, blighted, unsecured or abandoned structures. Chapter fifty, parks and recreation. Chapter fifty four, planning. Chapter sixty two, signs. Chapter seventy four, subdivisions. Chapter seventy eight, taxation. Chapter ninety four, zoning, providing for conflict, providing for severability, effective date and scribners errors. And this is second reading.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Miss West?
Yeah, what about alcohol change in order?
Okay, I can speak to the vacant, blighted, unsecured and abandoned structures, changes in appendix A, not the alcohol.
The alcohol change.
Yes, that was a change in the appendix A.
There was an increase from, from fifty to one hundred.
It's the section in chapter ten. So allow me to scroll to chapter ten. The, the amount for alcohol beverage license administrative review fee increased from fifty to one hundred by the planning department.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Is anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion to approve?
Someone.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to six C. Second reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And there should be a script in your pocket.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a script in your pocket, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Page. City Commission convenes the final public hearing in the city of Palac of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five millage rates and final budget as required by Florida statutes, chapter one, chapters one twenty nine and two hundred, as advertised in the truth and millage trim notices. If anyone in that ordinance is here for the purpose of contesting this assessment, a petition for adjustment with the value adjustment board needed to have been filed by five P M. Thursday, September ten, twenty twenty four, as stated in the trim notices sent via first class mail by the country, county's property appraiser to every taxpayer on the property value assessment roll. For those in attendance this evening wishing to address the commission, citizens' comments will be taken following the overview of the final budget by the finance director. The finance director, Marcia Carty, will now present an explanation of the proposed and rollback millage rates.
Mayor and commission, this evening we will take a few actions related to the adoption of the proposed millage rate and budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Tonight's hearing is.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Twenty twenty five, correct. Thank you. Tonight's hearing is the first of two. This is our final public hearing required to be held per Florida statutes prior to the adoption of the final millage rate and budget by a taxing authority. As such, this is the final budget hearing and final adoption of the millage rate and budgets will be considered tonight. Florida statutes require the name of the taxing authority, the millage rate to be levied, the rollback rate and the percentage change over rollback rate be publicly announced. In addition, one of the requirements of the truth and millage legislation is to provide information about why proposed millage rates differ from the rollback millage rates. Rollback millage rate is defined as the millage rate which exclusive of new constructions, additions, destructions, deletions and property added due to geographic boundary changes will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the prior year. The trim process requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised when the current year proposed aggregate millage rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rollback millage rate. The aggregate rollback millage rate is calculated by dividing the prior year adjusted property tax revenue by the current year taxable property value multiplied by one thousand. The current year taxable value does not include new construction and tax increment or CRA values. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, the aggregate proposed operating millage for the silly city of Palac is six point four zero, zero, zero mils, which is four point four five percent greater than the rollback rate of six point one two seven one mils. The increase in property tax revenue is essential to fund the appropriations needed to operate the general citywide budget. This is inclusive of personnel costs, operating costs, capital expenses as well as grant matches. Mayor and commission, the total final budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four dash twenty five is seventy five million nine hundred eighty five thousand, five hundred sixty six dollars. I am happy to answer any questions pertaining to the changes or on the budget before you currently.
Are there any questions for the members of the commission? Seeing none. I would now like to invite citizens to comment on the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five proposed millage rates and final budget. Please come forward to the podium. If you wish to address the commission, fill out a yellow speaker card that can be found in the back of the room. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment section of this public hearing.
Mayor and commissioners, the budget document before you, the fiscal year twenty five final budget includes appropriations described earlier. Any additional adjustments to this budget can be made by motion at this time.
Commission, any adjustments to be made to the budget document must be made by motion. If there are no adjustments, they should be made and approved by motion at this time. There are no adjustments, no motion needs to be made.
Mayor, excuse me?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question.
Sure.
If it's appropriate right now.
Yes, sir.
We talked about the millage rate and we do, we keep it at a level of six point four percent. And with the option to be able to roll it back before I find a decision. I was under the assumption that we would be able to do that. And what sparked my interest in this conversation now is, and the paper actually said that we, the city of Palac, our commission voted to increase the taxes. And I don't, I don't recall us wanting to increase the taxes. So could you, could you kind of explain that?
Yes, sir.
To us right now?
Yes. Okay, so our prior year millage rate was six point four zero, zero, zero. And when I prepared the D R four twenty, which is the form that's submitted to Department of Revenue, the rollback rate was six point one two seven one. Back in July eleventh, I think, twenty twenty four, we had our meeting and we voted to accept the, or to leave the rate at the rate that it was in the prior year. So that was that six point four zero, zero, zero. Now, we did have several budget workshops and so forth. And it would have been, you know, anytime the rate that is accepted is greater than the rollback rate, then that is considered a property tax increase. So if we did not, as a commission or a city, did not want to increase our tax rate, then what we should have done is made a motion to, instead of keeping the current rate that we have now from prior year that ends tonight, at that six point four, then we could have voted to put it down to the six point one two seven one, which would have been the rollback rate. And what that means then, in essence, we would not have a property tax increase. But the minute you have a rate that's greater than the rollback rate, then that is a property tax increase. In this instance, matter of fact, if I may mention, the prior year we had a property tax increase of almost twenty seven percent. And that was for the year that we're currently living in. So in this new year for twenty four, twenty five, the percentage of increase is only four point four five percent. So by accepting to keep the current rate of six point four zero, 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 it is four point four five percent greater than the rollback rate of six point one two seven one. So in essence, just by accepting a rate greater than the rollback rate, we have in essence increased the property tax.
Right. And what concerns me also is when you do live within the city, we not only have city taxes, we have county taxes, then we had a school board taxes that, that referendum hit everybody. And it's a little hard on taxpayers right now. And personally, I would want it to make certain that we kind of like give any type of break we could on property taxes and still be functional. So I know we had a workshop where I wasn't able to attend, and I guess I missed that opportunity. But I wanted to share that. I want to share my concerns and my sentiments about raising property taxes at this time. So.
Yes, sir.
If there was something that we could do at this time, I would like to, I would have liked to roll it back to six point one two. The ad valorem tax, the millage rate, right?
The rollback rate is six point one two seven one. I'm not certain that we can do that. I think we may be, we might end up being in violation and not meeting deadlines. You know, the two to five days and it's just so many deadlines. I, I don't have a problem with researching it for you and also calling the Department of Revenue to get guidance from that. This is not something that I'm familiar with us being able to do, right? The new year starts tomorrow. We actually extended our deadline because of the hurricane and literally by the chin chin, made it on time. The fact that we're having this meeting tonight allowed us to stay in compliance with state law. I will not encourage doing that, but whatever the commission desired for me to do, I will do. But I will do it under the guidance of Department of Revenue.
We did have several budget workshops as well. There wasn't just.
About five.
That's why I said several.
Okay.
We know that we had that, just.
But the, yes, and the key point would be to make sure that, you know, and we were, we were told if you were going to make it, you need to make it by this timeframe. Nobody said that you need to come several days prior to, we say, the last budget. This will be on this, this day. And so I think going forward, we need to know those timeframes.
Yes, sir.
So that we can be, because I've also expressed helping to try and cut back on the millage rate when we were doing the budget. I was asking during that time and to give the taxpayers whatever kind of break we get because I know that we were, we had six point one.
Two seven one.
Right. And so that, and then the, the additional fund, which would have even now if we were to, what would that have meant as it relates to?
Right.
From, from a budgetary standpoint, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. So we need to understand and know based on. three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. So we need to understand and know based on this, I probably can calculate that out, but um by six point, you know, six point one four, you have to divide that into the seventy five million.
Right.
Whatever to get whatever, but we need to make sure that everybody knows that just in case if they want to try and help. Now, we can be creative. If we pass this, we can still look within the budget to be able to look and see what can be held and still deliver uh some form of a relief, relief to taxpayer. We can, we can still do that from a creative standpoint.
May I say something? So to uh Commissioner Jones's point, uh he did ask us to at that time, uh Mr. Bell was here. And he did ask that we research, could we reduce the fire assessment? We were successful in that and we did do that. And, and during the budget workshops, uh one of the things that I did put together were the various options for, you know, either doing, staying at the rollback or I did put all those scenarios there. So what I will do per Miss uh Commissioner Joan requests, I will still contact Department of Revenue and seek their guidance on how can we uh possibly revise the budget if needed?
You know, in, in terms of making a, a, an impact, you know, again, that was seventy three, seventy four thousand dollars. You divided.
Just that fire assessment thing, but yeah.
What I'm saying is what was the reduction and the, 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 the benefit to the taxpayer? And when you divide it in the, the forty seven hundred accounts, it doesn't, it doesn't, they won't see it.
Right.
What, what, what has to happen is
Right.
we, we need to look at, okay, how that whole thing is constructed? And I very well understand how that works, but we got to make sure that we deliver something back to the taxpayers
Right.
that will help them because they're getting impacted by a lot of different fees. Now, I know the cities is not as much as people think it is.
Right.
It's the other uh taxing authorities that drives it up. And so what we can do with the funds that we have, we can be creative. We can, we can hit the military. We can hit the, the primary military that help get our, and not need, not, not test um the fire fee, or we can hit certain things only. But we need to know what that impact is. And I think we can test the, we can, we can test the military.
Okay, so therefore what I will do for this comment section here, I will follow through by contacting Department of Revenue. And I will make certain that uh as commissioners, you understand the difference in revenue that would be collected based upon the six point one two seven and the six point four. So you'll know the value of it. And then once you see that, if, if you tell me to that you want to do it, I will make sure that I have the guidance to follow.
Saying that we can still be creative.
Yes, sir, we can.
We still have proper funds as well as other things to kind of leverage.
I do know where you're going. You're saying we could be creative. I, I understand in terms of giving something back to the taxpayers.
We need to, we need to give them a relief because we it's been increased, 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 even though we keep it flat, well, what increases is the property values going.
Right.
And so then that creates that, that gap. So we need to be able to provide some.
Okay, I can bring that back to you. I did do that before in another city. And, and we did give back to our uh constituents. Yes, sir.
Provide a summary of that.
I will.
D O R.
I will definitely do that as well. Thank you.
Are we, do we have any more questions? Okay. Then we were at the, if there are any adjustments issued and made approved by motion this time, no adjustments, no motion needs to be made. Now it's on to the finance director.
Okay. And so I'm assuming I'm at the bottom of number three. I got so in there. Mayor and commission, subsequent to the commission adopting, I, am I at the right spot?
No, you're, you're here.
Where am I? I'm in the middle. Okay, thank you. Mayor and commission, Florida statutes require the commission to adopt the milit rates prior to adopting the related budget as such before US resolution number twenty twenty four R one ninety. This resolution includes the total general funding milit rate of fiscal year twenty five at six point four zero zero zero, which is unchanged from fiscal year twenty four.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, a resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, Rutten County, Florida, doming the final operating military for the purposes of levying ad valorem taxes for city Palaca, Rutten County for fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five and providing for severability.
Moved approved resolution number twenty twenty four R one ninety adopting the final milit rates for fiscal year ending September, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Closing public comment on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Mayor and commission, subsequent to the commission adopting the fiscal year twenty five milit rate, you must then adopt the corresponding fiscal year twenty five final budget before US resolution number twenty twenty four R one nine two, which will adopt the final budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five pursuant to the provisions of chapter two hundred Florida statutes.
Resolution of the city of Palaca City Commission adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and providing for severability.
Moved approved resolution number twenty twenty four R one nine two adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion and second and any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Closing public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Mayor and commission, the budget related business for this evening's public hearing is complete. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the final trim public hearing. Thank you.
I'm going to go home.
I know you do. Any commissioner comments?
I just have one tweet. I do want to um commend staff for a job well done. Not only during the, but of recent events that we've had in our city and how um staff has stayed on top of it with communication one way or another. Um, I'm extremely proud and so much for um Ms. Cardy, the emails that we receive are top nine. And I love the breakdown of how everything, um I was able to answer a question for someone that submitted an application. Um, just because I saw it on the, the update from it. So um thank you so much again, staff. Kudos to everything that they're doing. Um, and have done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner. Yes, I, I want to say something about uh the chief is gone, assistant chief is gone, but uh in light of other things that have happened, we have had uptick in violence uh with the shootings that we have had. We have had six shootings in eight days. With people getting hit, we all got those emails as well.
Yes.
As a commission, as uh I want to challenge the police department and all of our departments to try to actually, let's uh see what we could do as a community to curb this violence. And I know it's, you know, it's going to take a plan and we're going to have to actually get a plan and execute that. And I know again, Cardy, I'm not saying on you to do this because interim, but uh it's going to affect everybody, everyone. So definitely wanted to speak to the chief, uh assistant chief while he was here to see what we can do to help them achieve the goals of uh penetrating through the community's armor where they're, they're not having their guard up and not talking to the police.
Yes, sir.
You know, maybe Commissioner Campbell and I ended up on a scene the other day and it wasn't a, a, a pretty scene at all. And we just didn't see the communication with the uh community and the police. So we want to try to help break down those barriers so that we could actually uh we could slow the victim count down. And uh and not that they're not doing a good job, but I want to give the police kudos too, because they are out there working hard. The sheriff's office is actually also working uh diligently with our uh officers. Um, so we want officers to be, remain safe as well.
Yeah.
So uh I just wanted to make mention of that and, and we, we're talking about community events. And uh I asked Eddie today, it's correct, could we possibly do a something that all, I mean, all of us commissioners could show some cohesiveness during this time to try to do something. It ain't my day, it ain't your day. It's a real community unity day. And Mayor, if you want to add whoever, let's do it. And I think that's, you know.
I think it's an awesome idea, but I think before we have a day, we need to make a statement. And when we make a statement, I mean, from mayor on down to the commission with the support of our police department, just taking a stance with regards to that we are not accepting the violence in the city and that we are committed to doing whatever we have to do. Um, as stated, we both ended up on a scene where we probably had more people talk to us than they did the police. And that's
As well.
And that's something that we have to change. And so I know that I've reached out to um Chief Shaw personally to let him know that any resources or even influence that I have that I'm willing to provide that influence and in resources to make sure that we as a whole make a statement. But I would love to see a statement come from the city in general, just stating that we are not standing for violence and we are actively working towards formulating solutions that will help deter um to deter violence. But again, if you see something, say something.
Yes, and we could do that campaign. You kept me off, but um so we'll have a, a group. I'm just thinking that a group picture with Peter, putting that out as a public information officer, we stand together along with law enforcement and put that out.
There's no place for violence.
And Commissioner Jones, not only a group picture, but we, we make that statement that Commissioner Campbell said, we get together and we do a press release with us standing in unity and let that be the, the message.
That's the message. All right.
Yes, that's, and, and we just have to um, and, and we have to put, we have to put some resources to, we have to put money to, we have to be working with police department, understanding, knowing what resources they need. Do we need to bring in any additional resources to help with this? Because a lot of this has got some components to it that uh could be bigger than our operation based on what we got going here. There's some pretty serious uh nature uh events that has occurred in the past few days and, and it has continued to uh go and, and, and it's not, and it's not slowing down. So what we're going to have to do, uh, we, 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 we can't do it alone as a city. And we got to bring in the counties, we got to bring in churches, we got to bring in all, non, because everybody's impacted by, impacted by this. So we need to solicit every agency in our city, in this county to help drive this stuff down. And there's a number of things that we can do, but we need to put some money in the budget to have it available for that. And I'm willing to help carve out something from the ARPA funds to put that aside to, to um help uh, our, our officers uh with whatever funding they need. Uh, any additional resources they need from a, you know, gang unit standpoint, all that. We need to, we need to, we need to crush this and we need to send them a strong message that we don't stand for all of this continued violence and we need to have things in place. And a lot of these things that's happening, we, we seeing them happen in uh areas where hotspots. And so I'd like to collect a little bit of information as it relates to those hotspots and figure out what can be done in those areas to be able to have a more of a presence in a number of different ways and programs among other things. So it's a lot of components so associated with all this stuff. So we just need to make sure that there's a number of things I could, I don't want to go down the list of it, but I'll share this offline and not have to continue to belabor this. The, the other piece is that um there was, I'd like to have a request that I had asked for and I sent it to Ms. Carter around the um, the, the swimming program that um Governor DeSantis, he pushed, there's a grant associated with that. Uh, we're a peninsula state and um I had sent that to the former uh city manager.
Did you send it to me, please?
I sent it to you.
Okay.
Yeah. Right. So and we, we were supposed to have been, I, I adding that we're peninsula state, we have a number of different census drownings that we don't have to have. And um, and um, I know Senator Travis Hudson is behind it. And there's others. So uh we, it was only thirty two thousand for um Calro, wanting to do a um a partnership with them. They said it would be free uh to the public. And however, we do the M O U, construct that whole thing. I think that's all they were looking for, for that, to be able to have that Olympic sized pool available to the public. There's uh one out here on Westover and we don't have anything in this vicinity, this vicinity or area. So um, hopefully we can figure out a way if we can partnership with them to help bring.
Yes, sir. We will look into it. And just for your benefit, we have started um putting together recently a list of the churches, remember? And also the nonprofits and uh Community Affairs is currently going to be meeting with the police department. And they're actually starting that this week. So we're starting to try to come up with solutions.
Commissioner McCasco had already had a meeting with that and got a number of community resources, but I don't want to let her, let her.
This is ours.
Right. What I'm, what I'm saying is that, that was already kind of in the works. So kind of make sure.
So we'll come towards.
We, we all will get together with that. But speaking of churches, I can tell you on Sunday was a beautiful experience with Mount Taber, um Baptist Church and First Baptist Church. We did Unity Sunday. And they appealed to all pastors across the community to come together and they made a commitment that we will do join together in union every fifth Sunday. And I think that's a great move to help start and use as a resource to help stand up and show that we're not accepting violence and we are a community that stands together, that stands together in unity. So.
Would it be okay if I asked Assistant Chief, is there anything that you know we need? And you, you guys think about some of the things that you need so that we, we, we want to help.
Support that.
Yeah. So
yes and no. So first let me say, um, and I shared this with uh Ms. Cardy earlier. Today, we were notified by the um Department of Justice that we are receiving that four officer grant um that y'all allowed us to apply for. I do not know at this point if it's the full four officers or not. Um, they told us to go to their website to read what the contractual agreement is going to be. But as soon as I went to the website, it said that it's down for five days as they prepare to go into the new fiscal year. So Monday, Tuesday next week, we'll know what uh, how, what our award is going to be. Of course, we have to bring it before the commission for approval and everything um to accept the grant. But um we asked for four, we were allowed to ask for up to twenty percent, which would have been six. So in asking for four, we're pretty confident since they're going to award it, that we're going to get the four. We'll know next week. Um, Commissioner Jones was right. We've had three shootings in the last week, week and a half, um, six people shot. Um, honestly, our, our biggest problem is the fear of retaliation within our community. Um, we have victims, uh young men that are, that are being shot. Um, they at times know who has shot them, but do not want to tell out of fear of being hurt. And that's what we have to figure out how to get past. Um, we have a very good working relationship with the sheriff's office. Um, they go to every shooting that we have and they just offer their arms. What do you need? Um, so we are very appreciative of that. We have a wonderful relationship with the state attorney's office. Um, they're actively working all three of these current cases with us right now with search warrants, phones, all the stuff that we need to do. Um, as well as um the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Um, all of you know that we're actively engaged in a tri-county task force. Um, and anytime we have something, that task force runs to us. So we have resources. Um, we have uh in this budget that you guys just approved, we have sixty eight or seventy thousand dollars in safe grant uh money that is utilized for um hotspot patrols, um like you were talking about Commissioner Borum. Um, and we have increased our presence in the areas of the hotspots uh since the first shooting on Sunday night, early Monday morning. We've had an additional two people out every day. And they're mandated to be. We've had an additional two people out every day and they're mandated to be in those hotspot areas. Um, so it, the biggest fear, the biggest concern to me right now, and I would assume Chief Shaw would say the same thing, is getting through to people that it's okay to tell us what's going on. That's, is it?
I can tell you, that's something I observed what Commissioner Jones said when I approached one of the scenes. Uh, folks were standoffish from the officers and immediately when I came up, they gathered around me. And that's just something that I think we gotta break down those barriers so they can want to do the same thing and, and feel safe and not be in fear of retaliation.
I agree. But I think one of the ma- main things that we have to do is be a more present, um, in those communities. And I'm not just talking about riding around in the car. I'm talking about actually getting out and actively engaging with citizens from across Palaca in general. Um, I even said to somebody, it's a shame that our own city police don't even know who we are, um, when we walked up to a scene.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, alone is a problem, but I think more so of a problem is that when we did get on the scene, that more people came to talk to us and give us information. And any information that I receive, I always make sure that it's filtered to the right person. However, I think again, we have to, I don't want to say do a better job, but I want us to take into consideration other avenues that we can possibly take in order to be more into the community versus driving through a community.
Community, yeah, community, um, you know, policing, community-oriented policing. And I, and I sent something to the former city manager, former before that, former before that, to try to help implement. No, it's a, it's a, it's a program. They do door-to-door. They actually do door-to-door in my, well, North Miami.
They have to do door-to-door.
I sent that and he said he was going to work on it and we do have a police substation over there on, uh, North Seventeenth in Washington. And we celebrated, um, that back in twenty seventeen, opening that. I know, I know, but what it's, we, we, we celebrate, we, we celebrated opening it to have the officers use that as a station. And they were supposed to have computer resources there for kids to come in and do after-school things, uh, along with everything. So we have a facility, we have been working with, um, the housing authority on that. And so it, it's some things that, and, and, and the police have been going out doing those monthly, um.
The rocks, yeah. We, we, we are, we do do a lot, I mean, with, with, with our community platform.
Right.
But the big thing is too, is the shootings aren't just on the north side. The shootings are all over the city. They're all over the city.
Right.
Um, they're, they're in zone two, which is the rolling hills area. They're, they're in Lemon Heights Baptist Church area. They're, uh, it, um, K Larken Apartment Complex. We have multiple shootings at K Larken Apartment Complex. We know who's doing the shootings. It's just a matter of having witnesses and victims actually being willing to say, yes, this is what happened. Um, our last shooting that we just had, uh, with the two young men, you guys got the brief?
Yeah.
Um, they weren't even from our community.
No.
Um, they're from Lake County. Um, we executed two search warrants today, um, concerning that shooting. And that appears to be, um, a drug deal gone bad. Um, and, uh, I can't say that for, for certain. It's just what we're getting at this point. But those two young men, um, and, and they're not too much younger than I am, but, um, lied, both lied about their names. Uh, one, we still don't know who he is. Um, and as soon as he could get out of that hospital, got out of the hospital. So, um, we're using DNA to try to identify who he even is, let alone him telling us what had taken place. So, um, there's, there's just a lot, a lot to it. Um, our staff responds all hours of the day and night from home. Um, our, our, uh, major crimes unit does to investigate this stuff. And it's just, it's, it's disheartening.
Yes.
It's disheartening, um, when, when we're here to help and.
Help and enable you to do the best job you can. We're not here to do the job. We're here to.
You let us know.
Also, as was stated, get the message to the community that viol- violence is not welcome here and we're not going to tolerate it.
Right. So we need to really get on that campaign and it need to be, it need, it don't need to be, it doesn't need to come when we have situations. Because when these are coming in cycles, we need to have something that goes every, uh, month or, or every, something we keep active, working with the community, letting them know that violence, this type of violence is not acceptable here.
And I just want to say, if we can go ahead and commit to getting that statement, that press release, us getting together and then getting it out there and then we can go on from there.
Maybe we can share our thoughts to Peter as the public information officer. Come part and come up. Yeah, we can bring it back.
And do a press release.
Get this done quickly too. I can't keep procrastinating.
Right. But Chief, Assistant Chief.
Right, absolutely.
And that's it. I was a pitcher and he put it out, what we're saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
That's moving and that's showing we won't stand. All right, let's do it.
Do it. Next, can, do you have anything else to say?
No, Commissioner Johnson, let's make it. Is anybody else got to say?
I've got five. I'm gonna check the photo. That's fine right now.
Mayor.
So when you give me the touch sass, I hit it.
Why can't, can we stand right?
That's fine. So aren't they fine? Hey, little people jokes.
Oh, yes. So we, we got, we, we got.
Party.
We got this.
First response.
That's right.
Are we smiling or are we serious?
What are we smiling?
Serious or friendly?
Seriously.
Somberly friendly?
My eyes closed.
Somber, serious. Thank you so much.
We haven't had a picture of all the commission by themselves without other people and without special props like life jackets in quite some time. So it'd be nice to have a picture of the commission.
You'd be the tallest one in the middle.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
No, motion to adjourn.